Good morning. I am Mayor Jen Wallison and welcome to the Menlo Park City Council's March 18th Special City Council Meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with city council, city staff, and members of the public participating in council chambers. And it's so nice to see you all this morning. For those in virtual attendance, please note that there is a globe icon near the hand feature on your screen. This will allow you to participate and listen in today's event in Spanish. If there are any members of the public attending in person at the city council chambers who need access to interpretation, we have an interpretation station located at the back table. Our interpreters this morning are Angela Thilen, Gabriela Zayas Alom, Lorna Silva, Ashley Nunez, and Julie Burns. Thank you all so much for your time and services today.
Buenos dias, soy la alcaldesa Jen Wallison y bienvenidos a esta reunión especial del Consejo Municipal. Esta es una reunión híbrida con miembros que están participando del Consejo Municipal, miembros del municipio y el público aquí en las cámaras, en la cámara del Consejo Municipal. Para aquellos que nos acompañan de forma virtual, noten que hay un icono del globo terráqueo cerca del icono de la mano en su pantalla. Esto les va a permitir escuchar y participar en el evento de hoy en español. Si hay algún miembro del público presente que esté en persona en la cámara del Consejo Municipal y que necesite acceso a la interpretación, tenemos una estación de interpretación ubicada en la mesa de atrás. Nuestras intérpretes del día de hoy son Angela Thilen, Gabriela Zayas Alom, Lorna Silva, Ashley Nunez, y Julie Burns. Muchísimas gracias a todas por su tiempo y sus servicios el día de hoy.
Muchas gracias. I would like to introduce city council members and staff present at this time. This is Vice Mayor Cecilia Taylor. I have city council members Drew Combs, Maria Dorr, and Betsy Nash. Staff present in council chambers include our city manager Justin Murphy, our assistant city manager Stephen Stoltay, and our city clerk Judy Heron over here at the desk. And joining us virtually is our assistant, is our city attorney, Neera Dordy, excuse me. I also want to introduce at this time our facilitator for today's workshop, Steve Mermel from Baker Tilly, who will be leading us in our discussion. At this point, I also just want to pause for a moment to acknowledge our hardworking staff who was able to keep this workshop as scheduled even with the storms. We had a city council meeting this week, we had power outages. So the fact that we're sitting here today is no small feat. So I just wanted to acknowledge our leadership team and everyone at City Hall. And for all of you, you could have really been anywhere this morning. Thank you for being with us. It means so much to live in a community where our residents care so much about our city. So today, the city council will be focused on establishing high-level priorities and goals that will help shape the development of the next fiscal year budget. This workshop will help us make strategic decisions over the next year. As a follow-up to this workshop, the city council will consider a city work plan with more detail and specific projects. We have read, I'm sure all of us have, the nearly 400 comments submitted by members of the public. Thank you so much for taking the time to share your top priorities for the city of Menlo Park. We know how passionate you are about our city. And I want to just acknowledge for a moment that in years past, we sometimes have used this workshop as a way to prioritize specific projects. We're really going to be talking today about more high-level strategic priorities. So I just wanted to set that expectation. And as we get more into today, that'll become readily apparent. So to ensure that we have enough time to get through today, and so that we can hear from everyone, including those online, we will be limiting public comment to just one minute per speaker. So for anyone that's here today in person to make a comment or that's online, please note that we have read your submitted comments. And we'd like you to be very specific about the type of feedback that you get, that you share with us. And you can really just let us know kind of what it is that you're here to advocate for, and maybe one or two sentences about why. But to get through everything, we'd really like you to keep it at a high level. All of the comments that have been submitted ahead of time via the web form are in the staff report as attachment A. I also want to acknowledge that we got maybe a dozen or 20 or so further comments emailed into CCIN. And I know that we've all been keeping up and doing our best to read those comments as well. So also, I want to remind those in public that we will be trying to follow a high level of council chamber decorum. So some folks may or may not agree with your position. So we ask that you refrain from any audible reactions like clapping or jeering. If you want to agree with someone, you can, you know, move your hand like this or give a thumbs up. But it just helps the mood in council chambers to refrain from any major reactions. You could also feel free to say that you agree with X speaker if you're just repeating what that speaker said, or if you're representing the views of many people in council chambers, you can ask that they stand up to show the support for what you're saying. So with that, city clerk Karen, can you please provide instructions to the city council and members of the public on how this meeting will proceed?
Yes, and thank you, Mayor Wallison. And again, echoing a welcome to our special city council meeting this Saturday, March 18th. For members of the public who wish to provide comment on today's item, if you are participating in person, we ask that you complete a comment card at that back table and return it to me at the clerk's desk. For those of you participating online, we'll ask you to engage that hand feature in the bottom of the screen. If you are calling in from a landline or a cell phone, you can press star nine at that time. And as always, I have a reminder of our annual advisory body recruitment through April 7th at 5:00 p.m. More information can be found at menlopark.gov backslash commissions. And that includes my instructions at this time. Mayor Wallison?
Thank you, city clerk Karen. So we are moving on to C Special Business. The special business item for today is C1, Annual City Priority and Goal Setting Workshop. And to introduce today's event is our city manager, Justin Murphy. Mr. Murphy? Let me edit that. And instead of our introduction from our city manager, we are going to let the public who is here to speak to have their opportunity to give public comment first. So, city clerk Karen, can you please call at this time for public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Wallison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item C1, Annual City Council Priority and Goal Setting Workshop, if you're participating in person, we ask that you complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. If you're participating online, I'll ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. And our first speaker will be Lynn Bramlett, followed by Karen Grove.
Loud enough. So I'm Lynn Bramlett, and I submitted online feedback. You know, of course, I have my own priority, and that's disaster preparedness. But here, I'm really hope you'll talk about the structure of the government. I'd like to see efficient, results-focused, residents served first, and the businesses that serve them next, the small businesses. And it seems to me the place of development is overwhelming the staff. And fundamentally, I think we need more teamwork, including the residents. The residents want to help. And this book I read, I'll just refer to it, Teamwork: What Must Go Right, What Can Go Wrong, was so illuminating. This is the best book I've ever read on teamwork, concisely written. And the top prior, they have eight attributes. These were all kinds of teams across government, space. It's got to start with a clear elevating goal, results-driven structure, you know, competent team members, unified commitment. I think this has some excellent ideas here. And one thing I do hope we will work on is a clear mission that we can look at and get aligned to it. So thank you. And we also have ideas in some past collecting of input, like the city manager brochure. I would like to see a systematic way of working on that. And again, the residents want to help.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Karen Grove.
I'm just sorry, city clerk Karen. Can we actually increase, Ms. Bramlett, is there anything you wanted to finish up with? I apologize, we're struggling with the, how much public?
No, I apologize. It would be helpful, though, if we could see the timer, because I'm mindful of that. Okay.
Okay, yes, the timer is directly behind us. Can we do 1 minute 30 for public comment? I apologize. Thank you.
Hi, Karen Grove, speaking for myself and for Menlo Together. I know there was a lot of public comment about specific projects, and I appreciate that you're doing high priority. And I just dug this out of my recycle bin for a quick reminder about the number of public comments that have been made on the subject of housing, tenant protections, just housing justice in general. And I also want to lift up the amazing public input we received through the environmental justice element process. And I really hope that because this impacted community came out and put a lot of effort, time, and frankly, money into making public comment, because they lost work hours perhaps, that we honor that with some tangible, noticeable action this year that is responsive to, you know, some of their high priority asks. Well, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Patty Frye, followed by Edward Schlesinger.
Hi. Thank you for your storm response. It was very helpful to staff and council. I hope you have an overarching vision. Mine is an attractive, safe, welcoming town with high quality of residential life. I would like to suggest that we need some more guardrails and guidance for the development, the rapid development facing us, with more attention on financial and physical infrastructure support to support a high quality of life. This means a sustainable economy and so on. Anyway, I think the goals should include, oopsie, robust guidelines and standards for development and construction, modified zoning rules that lead to improved jobs-housing balance, and then infrastructure plans that support growth, such as storm drains that are overflowing, and parks and rec facilities to support the growing population, and an economic plan for recruiting and retaining businesses that produce city revenue. You can tap volunteer power to do a lot of that. You have a lot of current and former commissioners and council members, and property owners, renters, developers, businesspeople, academicians, use them, and task forces and working groups. And to have your, you know, harness the commissions. I don't think all the priorities have to be done by staff. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Edward Schlesinger, followed by Lynn Dando.
Good morning, city council and staff. My name is Edward Schlesinger, and I'm a member of the San Mateo County Tobacco Education Coalition. And I'm actually also a resident of San Carlos. And you may be asking, why is a resident of San Carlos coming to this meeting? It's because I am committed to making sure that multi-unit housing in San Mateo County is smoke-free. And that's because I used to live in a house, excuse me, in a home, a 36-unit building where we had secondhand smoke coming in our windows. And we organized to get a ordinance passed in San Carlos, and it made a huge difference in our quality of life. The San Mateo County Tobacco Education Coalition was integral to getting that passed, and we urge you to take advantage of their resources to make that happen. I have a sample ordinance with me today, if you'd like to see it. And we'd like to urge the community as well, if they are experiencing secondhand smoke in their homes, to please contact the San Mateo County Tobacco Prevention Program at 650-753-377, or they can email tobacco prevention at smcgov.org, so we can start helping them. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. So up next is Lynn Dando, followed by John McKenna.
Hello, Mayor Wallison, city council members. My name is Lynn Dando. This is Dani. I'm a Menlo Park resident. I serve on the planning commission. I'm speaking as an individual this morning. In 1975, my parents left their home in Vietnam, as did almost 2 million other Vietnamese people. They were grateful to make the U.S. their new home, but you never forget the loss of your home. Why is this relevant, and why do I share this with you? Because the devastating impacts of climate change from wildfires, drought, sea level, sea level rise and flooding threaten what all of us in Menlo Park and around the world call home, the earth. Menlo Park has an opportunity to be a leader. Along with Menlo Spark, the Menlo Park Climate Team asks that the city council prioritize equitable climate action. Our petition, A Healthy Climate Starts at Home, asks that the city update the reach code to include electrification of existing buildings. And in the process, we've got to elevate and include all voices. And when I say we, I mean myself, you know, all of us, not just, you know. Menlo Park residents support climate action, and John will speak more to this. We've also heard concerns about noise, grid capacity, power outages, and these are not reasons to delay action. Let's welcome these concerns to the conversations as issues to work through together. We cannot wait for everything to be perfectly in place before we take action. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is John McKenna, followed by Gregory Ferris.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor, council members and staff. It's great to be here. It's great to see you all. I serve on the EQC, but I'm here today as an individual and a father. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm here to ask you to prioritize meeting the goals of the city's climate action plan in general, and building electrification more specifically. While the city has numerous important issues to consider, it is our sincere belief that the climate emergency is the most critical. If we fail to properly and sufficiently address this issue, solving our other issues becomes increasingly difficult. We must mitigate and adapt. Building electrification can serve as both a mitigation tool as well as an adaptation tool by reducing our greenhouse gas emissions and providing resiliency with heat pump air conditioning, not to mention the many co-benefits, including better individual and public health. So far, the Menlo Park Climate Team has gathered 155 signatures on our petition. It's a work in progress. We've knocked on doors from the Willows to Suburban Park to Stanford Hills to Bellhaven. And I'd like to highlight the efforts in Bellhaven, where we've knocked on over 50 doors last weekend. Thirty-one individuals answered. Of those 20 signed the petition, four said maybe and asked for more information, which has been provided. Two, for two, there was a language barrier, and only five said, no, thank you. These are early results, and we plan to continue. But we hope to have these conversations in our community and hope this information will help you shape your thoughts on what to prioritize this year. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So next is Gregory Ferris, followed by Trisha Barr.
Hello, I'm Greg Ferris. I live in the Triangle. I'm here to talk about annexation. For years, we've been hearing that city staff and the city doesn't have the time and resources to do annexation. I say it's the opposite. You don't have the time to ignore annexation. I'll give you two examples. One is the speed limit on Santa Cruz Avenue, which was recently changed from 25 miles per hour for the whole length, about two and a half miles from the train station to Alpine Road. And it's 25 except for two blocks where it's 30 miles an hour. And I'll tell you, in those two blocks, there's four 30 mile an hour speed signs, one each for the county and the city, northbound, one each for the city and the county, southbound. So how are people supposed to slow down to 25 if they're seeing all these signs saying, you need, you can go up to 30? And the other example is the sidewalks for La Entra on Sharon Road. The city worked hard to put in sidewalks on Sharon Road on the side on one block. Sharon Road's two blocks. And they couldn't act on the other block because that's in the triangle. And this, this is too hard to govern and manage when you have this mess. The triangle has three sides. On the other side of the street, all three sides is the city. We're the county. On one side, the city stops halfway in the block. Law enforcement don't even know where the city stops and the county begins. Most of Menlo Park is joined to Sharon Heights, which is the westernmost part of of Menlo Park, is joined by a little strip in the golf course. I'm not making this up. Go look, look at the, look at the triangle, look at the maps. This is ungovernable. This is wasting time and resources. We cannot ignore this anymore. We began this process in 2014. Next year, it'll be 10 years. Only if you put this as a priority, and this is a high priority, only if you put it at a priority now, will you be able to finish it in 10 years. And unless you can show progress in the triangle, no one, no one else is going to want to annex. I hear that it'd be great to annex all that whole strip of West Menlo Park. Nobody's going to step forward if we spent hundreds of hours, thousands of dollars in administrative fees, waiting years and years if nothing happens. So now is the time to work to create the first step of making a unified and stronger One Menlo Park. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Trisha Barr, followed by Adina Levin.
My glasses are broken, so I look a little sillier. But my name is Trisha Barr, and thank you for the work that you do. I'm a 20-year Menlo Park, 20-plus-year Menlo Park resident and a co-chair of the San Mateo County Tobacco Education Coalition. So I'm here on behalf of both. I'm here today to ask that the city council prioritize an ordinance for smoke-free multi-unit housing. San Mateo County has an ordinance for all unincorporated areas that Edward had referred to, but there's no ordinance in Menlo Park to protect residents from secondhand smoke compared to 12 other cities in the county that have adopted these ordinances, such as Belmont, Brisbane, Burlingame, Daly City, Foster City, Half Moon Bay, Milbrae, Pacifica, Redwood City, San Bruno, San Carlos, San Mateo, and South San Francisco. So it's time for us as a city to get on board and help protect residents from the harm of secondhand smoke. And then also, just as a side note, comment, I'm racing to get solar, just like many of our neighbors, before the NEM 2.0 deadline. And I've heard great things from residents as far as the city process for permitting and how quick and streamlined it's been. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Up next is Adina Levin, followed by Catherine Dumont.
Good morning, Mayor, city council members and staff. Thanks for keeping this meeting with the storms. Wanted to speak, supporting the items in the Menlo Together letter with regard to high-level priorities and with a big theme of implementation. The city is on the verge of completing major plans, the housing element, to be certified by the state and the environmental justice element, which will be hopefully finished soon, and would really encourage the implementation of these plans and the housing element, building, you know, enabling the housing to be built at all income levels, including deeply affordable housing on the public land, on the downtown parking lots, and in the environmental justice, which includes elements that intersect with the housing element, with renter protections and measures to address health disparities and climate risks. Because these are large plans with many things in them, I would urge the city to take an approach that may be similar to the capital improvement plan, where there's a multi-year implementation plan over multiple years, so that the, you know, staff can plan and community members can view the path toward implementation. I will also add plans over last year's, the transportation master plan and the implementation thereof. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is Catherine Dumont, followed by Jenny Michelle.
Good morning, and thank you. I want to, I'm speaking to the letter from Menlo Together, but also as a Menlo Park renter and a cyclist, that I want to encourage the city to implement the plans that are already on the books. And to do that, I think, especially in the areas of housing and transportation, to ensure that there's adequate staffing to support the plans that are already there. And we want to make sure that these laudable goals of advancing a city that's more affordable, diverse, and equitable, that there are staff and in place to support that, and also to ensure that there's equitable representation across all the districts, on the commissions, and especially from D1, which has been underrepresented. And to suggest that perhaps the incredible work that the Housing and Planning Commissions do, that there be some kind of stipend for them, especially to increase diversity for those who, who just couldn't afford to take the time to do that. Otherwise, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is Jenny Michelle, followed by Angela Evans.
Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, staff, city clerk Judy Vance, neighbors, members of the public, my name is Jenny Michelle from the Common Place Neighborhood Blog. I also provided in-depth comments online. Labor is in devastatingly terrible shape. I can't count how many people we've lost in the last few months from work and housing casualties. I hurt inside, compounded with the context of climate collapse. We're in bad shape. Stabilize labor, and we will ultimately meet the goal of sustaining our own needs, goods, services, and people or markets who need them. In order to do that, we need housing, housing of every kind for literally all income levels. We would live cleaner, more in line with the cyclical nature of earth systems, and we might be able to delay our imminent climate collapse. Professionally, an aspect of my scope is to assess building systems and provide analysis to remedy at what options cost in timeline. If I were tasked with managing the earth systems and related components, I would be screaming from the rooftops, red hot fire emergency alert from every moment. I would have been fired by life itself. Life is failing across all species. Life is on the brink. It's expletive scary, and this era of failure of resistance. So the remedy for perspective is calibration. We get uncomfortable, we get real, we integrate. We figure out how to live and work with no vehicles, no food supply, no electricity, no potable water, no toilet paper, no internet. Will ham radio license sales increase? Will there be a run on FRS radios and bikes? Will we use water sparingly? Will we grow our own food? I hope so. We innovate for the oncoming tsunami of historic emergencies headed right this way. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Angela Evans, followed by Leah Elkins.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, city council and staff, for all of your hard work. This is Angela Evans. I am an EQC commissioner, but I'm speaking here as a resident of Menlo Park. Please prioritize a new city ordinance that requires electric heat pump water heaters and HVAC systems at replacement as of January 2024, as consistent with the petition presented here today by Lynn Dando and John McKenna. Thank you. These comprise, these appliances comprise the bulk of our building's climate pollution, which is responsible for 40-plus percent of our city's total climate pollution. There is no other accessible path to meet our city's climate targets if we don't address these appliances in this way. Now, since this last came before council in 2021, the landscape for this kind of policy has changed dramatically. Incentives from the federal climate bill, PCE and Bayrun make it cheaper to replace gas furnaces and water heaters with electric versions for the grand majority of single-family homes, as consistent with information provided by the climate team in their petition. The 14,000 per low-income household into multifamily units from the federal climate bill, including incentives for landlords and renters, all but guarantees cost savings for our low- and moderate-income residents. The state of California has a direct install service for low- and moderate-income folks starting January 2024. And PCE, I believe, aims to launch something for all residents, starting January 2024 as well. And as always, any ordinance of this kind can and should be passed with important exemptions for technical and financial feasibility, especially for our most vulnerable residents, as consistent with exemptions outlined in the model Bay Area reach codes. I also encourage you to please make available any public funds received to the city of Menlo Park by the state for electrification in our low-income community. We know that the 4.5 million from Senator Josh Becker has not yet arrived to the city. But when it does, please know that there are many homeowners in Bellhaven and pieces of Electrify Menlo Park's workforce development program with job training just waiting in limbo to access this funding. The state funding is an important resource for our Bellhaven community.
Thank you, Ms. Evans.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Leah Elkins, followed by Ryan Essenberg.
Yes, hello. Thank you for taking my comment. I'm just commenting today to raise the profile of the Safe Storage of Firearms ordinance that has gotten a little buried in all of the other important requests and priorities in front of the city today. But this ordinance will save lives and has, has been dormant for several years after being passed unanimously by the city council just immediately before the pandemic. And so I request that you reconsider bringing this back to, in front of the council and passing it once again, so that Menlo Park residents will be safer from unsecured firearms in the home. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Ryan Essenberg, followed by Al Helly.
Hi there, just want to make sure you can hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Great. First of all, thank you so very much, city council, for having this meeting. We all very much appreciate your time, effort, and coordination, as well as to the previous speakers and speakers coming after me. Thank you so much for your time. I'm just calling to thank the city council and other staff members for your continued maintenance and support of Neeland Park, specifically two areas, the playground for the kids, as well as the tennis courts. Thank you so very much when things are becoming exceedingly expensive in the wider world. It's good to have these resources for family, families and social gatherings such as Neeland Park, but also for the tennis courts. I can speak for many people who thoroughly enjoy and appreciate the access to the tennis courts for tennis players. And thank you so very much for maintaining the grounds. I was recently in touch with one of the staff members to change some light bulbs. So my comments will be brief, but thank you so very much. There's a lot of tennis players who thoroughly enjoy Neeland Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. All right, so our next speaker is Al Helly, followed by Erica D.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
E, I am part of the-
Actually, it looks like we are getting intermittent audio.
Okay.
Go ahead and try and start now.
Okay. Al Ali, I am part of Tobacco Education Coalition Institute? No, not me.
Yeah, your audio is going kind of in and out. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna call on Erica D., and then I will return to you. Does that work? Great. Thank you. Right, so I'm gonna go to Erica D., and then we will return to Al Helly.
Good morning, council. My name is Erica. I am part of the San Mateo County Tobacco Education Coalition and Youth Leadership Institute. I'm here to ask that you prioritize protecting residents who live in multi-unit housing from secondhand smoke by adopting a smoke-free multi-unit housing ordinance. Secondhand smoke is a public health issue that can cause heart disease, lung cancer, asthma attacks, low birth weight, and premature death. The home is where many children, adults, and non-smokers breathe in secondhand smoke. Whether an apartment is rented or owned, smoke can enter common areas and units through shared walls, ceilings, and floors. Menlo Park has over 400 multi-unit homes with over 3,200 units. Everyone deserves to breathe smoke-free air at home. Please address this public health issue as it will directly affect the health and well-being of the Menlo Park community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I'm gonna be returning to Al Helly, and then to Tom Pressing. And this will be the final call for public comment on item C1. If participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me. For those online, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or cell phone, press star nine now.
Hi, how's my audio?
Me, I'll have you start your comment, and I'll pause you if we're getting intermittent.
My name is Al Ali, part of the San Mateo County Tobacco Coalition and Youth Leadership Institute. I'm here to- residents who live in- secondhand smoke. In the past few years, our homes have become our offices, gyms, and everything between. Despite a new wave of fans returning to publics as transmission rates decrease, the public health threat of secondhand smoke still remains. Menlo Park- unit homes totaling metly 3,206. Everyone deserves to breathe smoke-free air at home. We strongly urge the council to address this- directly affect the health and-
Okay, Al Helly, we are getting, again, just some intermittent. I do believe we received the pertinent information in your public comments. We do appreciate that. Feel free to submit any written public comment to city.council@menlopark.gov. Thank you. So our next speaker is Tom Pressing, followed by Marcy Abramowitz.
Good morning, council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go right ahead, Tom.
Good morning, Mayor, council members, city manager, and staff. Again, thank you for this opportunity. I'm Tom Pressing. I live at 194 Ravenswood. The recent winter floods and the two windstorms with extended power outages should be enough impetus to place Menlo Park Emergency and Disaster Response in the top three of city priorities for the coming year. I sent in a detailed recommendation on how to bring that about, so I won't share that now, but you all have that in the online portion that I submitted. Most of the recommendations have already been documented and practiced, so there is no need to reinvent a municipal citizen emergency response wheel. In addition, I know there is a staffing shortage, so obviously that should be a priority of the city to help you, the city council, achieve your goals. And we also need to put some attention, a lot more attention, on maintaining our Menlo Park businesses as a citywide priority. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Marcy Abramowitz, followed by Steve Walter. Marcy, you should be able to unmute your end at this time.
Whoop, sorry about that. Good morning. I'm Marcy Abramowitz, speaking on behalf of several neighborhoods and businesses along the Caltrain line from Park Forest to Linfield Oaks. As a group, we want to thank council and staff for your work on the Quiet Zone Implementation Study and for hosting the community meeting next Thursday. We greatly appreciate your commitment and effort and are eager to learn about the various options that can move the city towards establishing a quiet zone across all four crossings. Over just the past two weeks, you've received input from well over 150 residents and businesses, including hotels and restaurants, about the importance of prioritizing the quiet zone in the coming year. This includes how approximately 1,700 horns sound each weekday at an average of 110 decibels, and significantly reduces quality of life, sleep, health, and impacts local businesses. The noise problem is only getting worse as trains increase, and local concern just continues to rise. With the implementation study now complete, we are within reach of realizing the vision of an extended quiet zone that stops the horns from even north of Atherton all the way through to Palo Alto. And we urge you to build on this momentum and move the quiet zone priority from the existing one of exploration to a priority that is focused on implementation. Making the quiet zone a reality will be transformative day and night for thousands of Menlo Park residents, workers, shoppers, and guests. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Steve Walter, followed by Fran Dean.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go right ahead, Steve.
Thank you. Basically, Marcy said everything. I was going to say, I wanted to speak in favor of the quiet zones for my neighborhood along Mills, as well as the other neighborhoods abutting the tracks. The horns, I've been putting up with them for 25 years. They've gotten worse. And there's gonna be more trains coming with electrification. Even though the engines will be quieter, the horns would still be as loud. Now's the time to do it. It's also a safety issue. It's not often, but I still see people impatient, driving around the arms because the trains aren't coming. Who knows why they do it? But it still happens that cars will drive through the arms because they can. If there were four arms, that wouldn't be an option. So there's a safety factor here, as well as a quality of life issue. And not to belabor the point, but we knew, have two big developments opening up, Spring Line and the Stanford Developments. So hundreds of more people are going to be impacted by the train horn. So I'm very pleased that this has been a priority over the last couple of years. I just encourage you, the momentum to be maintained.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, and our next speaker will be Fran Dean, followed by Sally Cole.
Good morning, and thank you. Good to see you all again. I do want to thank you for your time today with goal-setting, the workshop. This is setting the stage for the future of Menlo Park. Excuse me. As you approach your decisions on priorities today, please consider economic development as central to all of your decisions. A focus on economic development is the only way that all others will become a reality and not just a plan. And I'm gonna refer to something that's in the slide deck, the big rocks. Economic development is your boulder. Don't forget it. We are not paying attention to economic development today, and we need to. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker will be Sally Cole.
Hello. I first just wanted to say how energizing it is to see all the public comment. And thank you so much to the council and the staff for doing this on a Saturday. Your time is so appreciated. I just wanted to make mention, I'm on the Complete Streets Commission, and I just wanted to highlight to everyone that I was very grateful to see that the fourth priority that came up in terms of topics from public input was safe streets improvements related to bicycling and traffic. And I'm here just to make a quick comment to say, please, council, continue to make this a priority. I know it requires focus and commitment, and there are so many priorities, but I think it's very clear with all the development coming online now and in the future that safe streets needs to be a really integral part of the way we think through these major developments and the impact they have on bicycle tra- and traffic and pedestrians and everyone else in Menlo Park. I want to make sure, being on the Complete Streets Commission, we're all super energized to continue to support the council and its priorities. And I think that it's a lot of, it goes to speak to the experience of living in Menlo Park that you feel safe and secure in the streets and getting around for all users. The last thing I'll say really quickly is a specific ask. I think traditionally, as far as I can tell, when the council has asked commissions to step forward and take a close look at the development plans, the planning commission has been really central. But I'd like to ask consideration that the Complete Streets Commission be also involved early and often in looking at development plans and being able to comment and put priority on safety of the streets. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Willison, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you so much to everyone who spoke today, who wrote in, who cares enough about our city to take the time out of your busy lives to come and speak with us. Gosh, when I hear the list of items that residents want and ask for, I, I want to say yes to just about everything. So with that, I think we're gonna turn it over to City Manager Murphy. So can we have everything all at once? Everything everywhere all at once? Or are there some trade-offs? And how are we going to be thinking about this today? So City Manager Murphy, I'm gonna turn it over to you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Willison, and thank you to the city council, and thank you to the members of the public. So I do want to just kind of probably say that we won't be able to do everything everywhere all at once, but that, but we understand that spirit. So I just want to kind of set the stage on a few things for, especially for members of the public and to kind of express my appreciation to the city council. Today's city council meeting is not the typical city council meeting. The city council is not sitting at the dais. The city council is sitting around a table. And the way today's setup was, there's actually staff members interspersed with the city council. Part of that, so the city council can actually see each other. So that's, because part of today's discussion is kind of focused on the city council. So that's, that's where, there's been a lot of great input, but frankly, the majority of the rest of this session is really focused on the city council to work together on things, to provide guidance to staff so that we can hopefully deliver on those things. So there's, there are a few things I'd like to recognize. So again, thanking all, all the public comment today, you know, overwhelming public comment on the online forum, the CCIN city council email logs, those additional submissions, another 21 people that spoke today. Thank you for being, recognizing the time limits, being succinct. That was all very helpful and productive, so we appreciate all that input. There's a lot for us to ultimately kind of work through after today's session, but it's all informative for the city council. I also just do want to recognize that the past few years have indeed been difficult. We're at the tail end of the COVID-19 pandemic, extreme weather events that have been recognized recently. So I think it's a reflection of the overall community's resiliency. So this is my first, I've been with the city for over 25 years. This is my, I've attended a number of council workshops. This is my first workshop as a city manager. I think this is the first time that the council has had an in-person workshop for, for three years. I still, still remember that day when, at the time, Vice Mayor Taylor was Mayor Taylor. A lot has changed over the past three years. I think it was two years ago when current council member Drew Combs was the mayor at the time that the city was able to conduct a, an virtual online workshop, which was great, because that's, that's evolved today so that we can have a hybrid session where we've got members of the public contributing remotely. Last year, a current council member, Nash, at the time Mayor Nash, and with her, her leadership decided it was, there's a lot of transition in the city. She kind of opted to kind of focus on tasks at hand and carried over previous priorities. So we appreciate that allowed staff the time to focus on those. So this year, with the Mayor Willison's term, we're kind of restarting the practice of having the, the annual goal-setting. So we're, we're looking for this as kind of an opportunity for a fresh start moving forward. This would ultimately be a multi-year process. So we do think that today is a key opportunity to kind of build that foundation for future strategic planning. So it's ultimately extremely important for the council to talk amongst themselves, to be able to kind of work through some of these issues, to identify kind of key overarching goals. And then ultimately, city staff would be working to develop more detailed work plans on how to deliver those. It will most likely be multi-year work plans with milestones showing progress, tangible results focused on city residents and, and what ultimately makes up the overall community. So that's, that's the way that myself and our team is approaching it. So I do want to recognize, as mentioned earlier, the Assistant City Manager Stephen Stoltis at the table. You have a number of people in, in the, in the audience today. I just want to call them out quickly, and then we have additional staff members online. So we've got our Chief of Police, Dave Norris, our Admin Services Director, Brittany Mello, our Library and Community Services Director, Sean Reinhardt, our Deputy City Manager, Nikki Nagaya, our Public Engagement Manager, Clay Curtin. I'm a little short, so I need to keep looking. We've got Deanna Chow, our Assistant Community Development Director, Sockney Si, IT Specialist. I'm a little short, so I need to keep looking. We've got Deanna Chow, our Assistant Community Development Director, Sockney Sai, IT Specialist Nicole Casados, Administrative Assistant, and Judy Herron, our Assistant City Assistant to the City Manager, City Clerk. And remotely, we do have our, as mentioned earlier, our City Attorney, Iradore. So with that, I think that kind of gives the overview, looking to be able to then turn it over to our facilitator for today's meeting, Steve Mermel.
First of all, I want to introduce myself, but I want to thank the mayor and council and City Manager Murphy for inviting me here today to help facilitate this council workshop. My name is Steve Mermel. I have been a practitioner in local government for about 34 years. I retired as a city manager about 14 months ago. Three years of COVID and various shutdowns got a lot of people thinking about their future career paths. And I was one of those people that joined the the great resignation, I guess, the retirement. But I'm happy to continue to pass on what I know about public administration by working with the firm of Baker Tilly. We provide consulting services to local governments. And I'm pleased to be here with you today. I got into town yesterday. It's beautiful day, beautiful weather today. I got an opportunity to to both drive around and walk around your town. And it's an exceptional city. So thank you very much. Next slide, please. So as the mayor indicated earlier, our purpose here today is to set priorities and goals as a tool to guide the city manager and his staff for the next fiscal year. It doesn't mean that many of the things that the speakers, both in person and online said, doesn't mean that those things aren't also going to be worked on. As we get into the discussion today, a city manager, Assistant City Manager will touch on some of the multitude of efforts that are underway. But by definition, any organization can't have everything at once. And there is a need to focus your efforts in a strategic fashion to meet the demands and fulfill the vision of the city. So today's meeting today is for the council ultimately to set some broad priorities. Which subsequent to that, the staff will develop work plans, as the city manager indicated, to identify strategies and objectives to further those big goals. A lot of cities get bogged down in just tasks and projects and they're missing the big picture. And that can be dangerous. So if you really want to line the city up where you want to go, you need to think big picture strategically. And that's where the City Council comes in perfectly because you set the policy direction for the city. You set the vision for the city. Next slide, please. So before we get into priority setting, we don't want to just jump into it and confront you with, okay, pick pick priorities. We want to spend a little bit of time building a foundation, talking about governance and norms. Setting the stage, talking about the context in which all of this takes place. Discuss some of the major projects and initiatives that are underway and that will be continuing into next fiscal year. Because frankly, you have a lot going on in this city. And then hopefully we can get consensus on council priorities. And then we'll talk about what those next steps will be, what the staff will be doing to bring that into fruition. Next, please. So some some ground rules. I had an opportunity to speak with most of you. I don't think this is going to be an issue today. I've been in some other communities where it really was an issue. But please listen to one another, you know, seek consensus, assume good intent on part of all those participating. If we need a course correction, speak up and stay focused. And I know I have your attention. Next, please. So, you know, our session today is really twofold. It's an opportunity to focus on both of these important components of serving the community, the the what you do is the goals and also the policies that you establish. And the how you do it is the team approach. And I appreciate the public speaker suggesting some reading for all of us. And that's the approach you take with each other and with the staff. The public and the staff, they watch the council. They watch the council meetings. They see how you model. And they see the good behavior at the council level and it trickles down to the staff. It trickles down to the community. You really are a model. You set the tone. Next, please. So let's take a few minutes and talk about what makes city councils effective. Sadly, there's a lot of dysfunctional councils out there. And there's a lot of high functioning councils. So effective councils have all these traits. They have a unity of purpose. So that's your mission, your vision, your values. And part of what you're doing here today goes to establish that unity of purpose. There's clear roles and responsibilities. Everybody understands what their role is. The mayor runs the meetings, the council sets the policy. The city manager carries out the council's directives, working with the staff. The city attorney helps provide the framework in which it all operates. You want to create a positive governance culture. And so we're going to spend a little time talking about what makes good for good governance. And a lot of cities adopt norms, council protocols and policies. We're going to talk a little bit about that. That might be something that you want to do if you haven't done that already. Next slide, please. So I shared with you all, and I believe it's been posted on the web, an article from the Institute for Local Government, which is part of the League of California Cities. It's an article entitled Attributes of Exceptional Councils. And it's very helpful. If you haven't had a chance to read it, I would encourage everybody to take a look at it. It's pretty simple and straightforward. Again, fostering a sense of team. Making sure that everyone understands what their role is, where their lanes are, conducting effective meetings like you're doing here today. And and having members that practice continuous improvement. The League of California Cities offers a lot of training for elected officials, taking advantage of those opportunities to further your understanding, work with your state representatives to have a better understanding of how governance works in the state of California. I wanted to pause for a moment to see if there was any reaction from the council members after reviewing the article. What what did you like in it? What resonated with you? It was short, that was easy? No. What do you think? Did did hopefully you all got a chance to take a peek at it? Did it did it ring true to you? Was there anything in there that you would agree with, that you would disagree with? Did you see yourselves in the article? Do you see how your behavior as a council is reflected in the suggestions for exceptional governance?
So Mr. Mermel, just a point of Mermel.
Mermel.
Mermel, Steve.
Steve is much better.
So since you're facilitating, I'm going to relinquish my mayoral calling on people duty. And then if you can, I believe Councilmember Nash probably wants to speak up, but please.
That's great if we're able to forego a little bit of the formality and have a little bit of an interaction. That's what typically we try to strive for. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to say thank you for the article and it really resonated with me. I love the teamwork approach, which I think is what we always strive to do. And it was just a nice foundation for this meeting and city governance.
I would add to that an appreciation for, I like the line, represent the values and priorities of the city, each as an individual on the city council and our duty to our district as well as the whole city of Menlo Park.
Yes, more and more cities quite rightly move to districts, which they should to make sure there's good representation. It's important to keep in mind the needs of your individual districts, but also understand you're part of the greater whole. So that's been an interesting transition up and down the state. So that's a very good observation. Great. Okay. So and again, I would encourage, I believe this is posted online for the public. If they want to read it, it's very helpful. And it, the article also points out that the exercise we're doing here today is also a a key component in good governance. So moving along. So let's take a few minutes and talk about norms. Norms are an agreed upon standard of behavior and practices. A lot of councils, as I mentioned, have adopted a set of norms for governance. I shared some material with the Assistant City Manager earlier today for future consideration. Next slide, please. So here are some typical council norms that you may see. Councils may adopt these, or I'm working with another city that has a proposed three pages of norms. That's not normal. But we'll see if we can work with them to bring it down a little bit. But let's take a moment and look at these. And I would ask you, do you see anything on the list? Again, that resonates with you that if you were adopting a set of norms that you would include, do you concur with it? Would you change any of these? It'd be great to get a little feedback from the council. Do you see, do you recognize practices that you model? You could check them all off. It's good.
Yeah, thank you for sharing this. I think we have struggled to have a procedure manual or policies on some of these topics. For example, one that kind of we keep butting our head against is how to agendize items. And so I think there is some work for us so that we don't keep catch each other off guard so that things are done equitably and fairly and transparently. But so I think this is a work in progress for us and we probably need a little more attention to it.
Well, and as the city manager indicated, hopefully today marks the beginning of a new phase in the city where you move more towards developing an annual strategic plan and goal setting. As part of that, you adopt norms and protocols, all to strengthen all that you're doing. The information I shared with the Assistant City Manager speaks specifically to agendizing matters because a lot of cities do struggle with that. And you want to be fair and equitable, as you say, to all the members of the council, but you also need a process. Because when things come out of the blue and they catch everybody off guard, it it becomes very awkward and challenging to deal with. So government, for better or for worse, needs structure. And so if you have the structures in place and everyone understands how it works, then it keeps everything pretty copacetic. Any other thoughts on the norms?
Thank you. I actually am excited about it and would love to see the council have actually all 12 of these practices. Something that I've struggled with for my five years on council is actually having some of the good governance key components and practicing them regularly, having a discussion about them regularly because they they are important to me. But having some guidance on how to follow them. And then even for the city manager to have that as well. So it's we're working as a unit to meet those goals. So for me, I'm interested in actually all of them. And one that I circled is just communicate concerns. And this is something that I believe all council members have had are concerns from the public and it's regarding staff and how to implement our our community's participation in what our staff is doing. They because they want to be a part of it. They want to help. So that for me, that's a key component that I would like to see.
That's a good one. As the council member, the public will connect with you and they'll share both good and not so good feelings about city staff members and their interaction. And the appropriate thing to do is for you to to tell that the member of the public, thank you, I'll share your concern with the city manager. And then to pass it on to the manager for him to handle it appropriately. So this may be something.
Add one thing to that. And that is most of the feedback that I've gotten has actually been positive. It's just bringing it into a conversation together between staff and public. So it's mainly been positive.
So, you know, ultimately, subsequent to this workshop, the council may want to consider adopting a statement on norms and revisiting it annually. Again, the work that we do throughout the state, albeit another client in about a week, and they'll simply be revisiting all of their governance norms and procedures because it's it's a good refresher to remind yourselves as an organization, and especially since the last three years have been such a blur. People are trying to re-center and figure out, okay, where, you know, where are we? So great.
Um, Steve?
Sure.
Can I just say one more thing? I think if I'm speaking frankly, sometimes the norms can be a little awkward to, I don't want to use the word, well, I guess the word's enforce. Because we're all, you know, elected by constituents and we all have, you know, our work and our our that we want to accomplish. And so I'm totally in support of following norms. But there might be circumstances where, you know, we have to be reminded of norms. And then I just, I I wonder, you know, whose job is it to remind each other? Especially since we kind of answer to to the public. We have to be bought in that we answer to each other. So just curious what kind of best councils do in terms of reminding each other of norms and whatnot.
Right. I mean, I, the reality is that each council member really has to self-regulate. And I think that's the benefit of at least annually, as part of this type of an exercise, reviewing your norms and saying and saying that you buy into them to remind yourself that this is what you agree to abide by as part of your role on the council. It's not really the type of thing that the other council members can enforce. I mean, some councils sadly do have policies to censor a member or what have you. You hope it never goes that far. So it's really just a good reminder. It's a refresher for all of us to say, okay, this is what we need to do because it's easy to slip into bad habits and to forget. And it's nice to take some time and to resent to yourself and say, okay, this is where where we stand in terms of our governance. It's good to revisit your mission, vision, values annually to just to to re-center yourself and know that this is what you signed on to do and that you're carrying out the public's business. So it's self-regulating.
I have a follow-up question. Do we need to make the norms a part of our mission?
You can, you can do as you see fit. You can adopt council norms of behavior as part of a council meeting policy. You could do it as part of your, you know, mission, vision, value statement. You can really have it however you want. I think if you had a council meeting policy, that would be a good place to to have it. It's typically what you see. Next slide, please. Let's jump to the next one. So again, starting to set the stage for today's conversation. And again, I want to thank you for the conversations that I've been able to have with members of the council. These are the comments that I heard from council members about today's effort. So again, appreciation to that. There's clearly a desire on the part of the council to be more strategic. And to not make this meeting just simply about trying to pick 10 items to pursue out of a list that is long as your arm. Because that's not possible. It's trying to stay focused on the big picture and that will drive a lot of those other things that you heard. A lot of the public comments that we heard will ultimately fall under one or more of your larger strategic priorities. It's just the way that things work. One of the members of the group suggested considering a two-year budget. A lot of cities have done that. That's, that's one way to keep work plans a little more stable. Obviously, there's there's a need sometimes to amend the budget halfway through, but that's one thing that you may subsequently want to consider. Wanting to stay focused on what you've already started. Again, in a few minutes, we'll talk about some things that are on underway. And things take time, big things take time. And so a lot of the projects that your staff is working on are are carrying on to this day and will go out into the future. Trying to keep that citywide focus, but also recognizing that there's some particular needs in some of the areas of the city that need to be attended to. And being ensure that you're inclusive of the entire community. I think it's great that your meeting today is accessible both physically and on Zoom. So that's a great, I also noticed that you have a, you run a shuttle bus that people can go get on if they wanted to come to the council meeting and that's something that's very commendable. So thank you for that. Any other comments that council members had about the exercise of priority setting? Hoping to make you talk a little bit today.
So as part of this, I'd love to know how we deal with events that come up that pull us away from priorities. I mean, the most recent being the storms. You know, we've also had with the elections, we had a measure that came up that really focused us. There's certainly regulations that pull us away from priorities, which are one of the priorities, but it certainly consumes a lot of time. Just how do we how does that factor in not now necessarily later on in the conversation?
We will be talking about that later. You jumped ahead. We will be talking about that a little bit later because things happen. And you can't be so myopic not to react to what's going on around you. A natural disaster, for example, can completely throw things off, right?
But of course, COVID.
Yeah, that that threw everybody. Absolutely, absolutely. Right. Next slide, please. So Mayor, forgive me for putting a slide in here. So Mayor, forgive me for putting a slide in here. The mayor doesn't like that we can't do everything. I appreciate her attitude. I mean, the reality is that if everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. So you do have to prioritize what you do. But the city is a perpetual institution. It's going to be here. Perhaps you don't get to things as quick as everyone would like, but if you set your sights on it and you work towards it, you will eventually get there. But again, trying to be strategic in terms of what's important is really the goal of the exercise here. And so the notion is to focus on some big picture items that drives a lot of your objectives and your strategies. A good example, of course, is climate action. That's a very, very broad category, but so many of the things that you hear from your constituents fall under that, whether it's electrification or even the smoking issue arguably. So there's a lot that falls under there. It's important that the council recognize that there's a lot of ongoing work in city departments that day in and day out, they're moving in the direction that the council has set them on. People join public service because they're doobies and they want to help. So your staff is here, they're enthusiastic, and they're furthering the mission of the city. So it's important to have a collaborative and a trusting relationship with them. The city manager is the key to that. You work through the manager to the staff, but recognize the expertise that you have, because you have an incredibly talented staff. Try to set a few priorities and go after them, go after them earnestly, and you'll achieve them. Next slide, please. Some of you know the author Stephen Covey. He wrote The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, and he created the Big Rocks metaphor. And his point is that if you really want to get big things done, you have to allocate the time to do that. Once you've allocated the time for the big things, where you have room, you fill in the small things. And so those are their small rocks. But if you spend all your time just being task-oriented on the little things, you don't get the big things done. So that's what we ask the council to keep in mind today as your focus, as you develop what your major priorities are. Next slide, please. So as we proceed, we're going to spend a little time talking about some accomplishments, because you do have a lot of accomplishments. We'll talk about the items that in the interviews the council's flagged as items of interest to them. Talk a little bit about what's already underway. I'm going to get you up out of your chairs and get you to vote. I have colored dots for each of you. You're gonna, that's how you're going to pick your top four priorities. And then we'll talk about how the staff will then take that and develop the work plan that the city manager mentioned earlier. Next slide, please. So some of the key accomplishments in the interviews with council members that came up are listed here on the board in no particular order, although I will say every council member cited the new executive leadership in the city. So I wanted to point that out specifically. And I think the fact that the city manager is wanting to have this sort of a workshop today is indicative of a good tone at the top of the organization. So looking at the list, are there other accomplishments that council members that come to mind that you'd want to share with the group? Certainly, there are other accomplishments. Any feedback on any of those accomplishments?
So I just want to understand at this point, you're asking the council members, what like first, are there, are there some things here that you think it's important to highlight as accomplishments? That aren't listed specifically?
Yes, that's one question.
Okay, so I'll start off just in that vein. Though one of the things I certainly think is an accomplishment is, is the efforts of sort of re-establishing programs and engagement with residents out of the pandemic. There are a number of things that we've brought back in terms of community engagement, whether it's gymnastics programs, some other community events. But certainly I see that as, you know, accomplishments. They bring us, they're not net new accomplishments over the course of the city's history, but they're net new in comparison to a couple of years ago where they had gone away. So I certainly see that as, like I said, accomplishments.
Certainly. Any other thoughts? I think as a city, you have a lot to be proud of. That's great, okay. All right, well, jump to the next. We'll let you off the hook. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to the city manager to give you a little bit of a financial outlook, because again, everything the city does, as someone who served as a finance director a couple of times, without the money, you can't do anything. So the city's financial position is the key to being able to pursue any of the goals and strategies that you outlined. So it's appropriate to hear from the manager as to how things are looking these days.
Great, thank you. So I'm just going to try to provide a high-level overview to help set the stage for, in some regards, like managing expectations. We will have some additional information later. So first off, in terms of, so the general fund is the portion of the city's budget or source of funds that provides the greatest discretion or flexibility on how the city spends that. And that revenue is, comes down to three basic components. And so I can just kind of give a high-level summary of those three revenue sources over the past few years. So so the property taxes experienced a slight reduction during the pandemic, but have continued to recover in an increasing trend. So Menlo Park has very strong property tax base. TOT or transient occupancy tax, taxes from hotels, visitors of hotels decreased dramatically during the pandemic. And so that was by far the biggest revenue hit that the city took. In 2022, we saw a revenue begin to increase, and we're forecasting a near return to the pre-pandemic levels in 2023. And continued recovery in 2024. So that's, that's heading in the right direction. Sales tax decreased during the pandemic and is not fully recovered. And our forecast that may not recover to pre-pandemic levels until 2027. So sales tax is indeed down. So in terms of thinking about any, anything in regard to recovery, it's back to what that comparison is to 2019 comparison. So then during that timeframe, we also are experiencing upward pressures on expenditures. And so that's the, not the best combination of things. So, so that, so in this current times, there's quite a bit of economic uncertainty. So recent financial system issues, the layoffs that are happening in the local area, those are real things that are going to have impacts to people, impacts to revenue. And so those are some things that we're going to need to kind of keep in mind as we plan for this upcoming budget cycle. And there's also, you know, concerns about whether we're on the edge of a recession. There's still inflation considerations. So there's a lot in flux right now. So as part of this upcoming budget cycle in the April timeframe, we're going to be producing an update of the five-year forecast for the city's general fund. And so that will be available for the council when it's considering kind of the work plan items and next year's budget. So we don't have that, those specifics right now, but we'll be updating the five-year forecast in this coming month. So that's just kind of, to kind of understand that Menlo Park has very strong, long-term fiscal situation, but there is indeed some uncertainty on the horizon here.
I have a question, Jess. Mr. Murphy, and that is with the sales tax, is that the decrease based on the number of businesses that have either retired or transitioned out of Menlo Park?
Let's see, it would definitely be a combination of things. And some of the sales tax that the city generates is business-to-business sales versus the more traditional from a real retail store. But yeah, I think the, the loss of some businesses over the past few years has definitely contributed to that reduction in the sales tax.
Any other questions for the city manager? If not, we continue, but I wanted to make sure there's sufficient space for the council members leased at this juncture.
So just to reflect and clarify then, so we set our strategic priorities, and then the staff goes through and develops the work plan and the budget based on kind of our financial reality. So our strategic priorities wouldn't necessarily change based on how we're doing financially. It's just the amount of work and scale and impact that might be in flux, depending on how the budget's looking?
Yes, that's a great summary of that. I will only add that I do think it's important in looking at the city's revenues, certainly in conjunction with its engagement with the public and the services it provides. There are some of those engagements of which the public pays for. So like if I have a planning project, I pay planning fees, and someone who's gone through that process, they're not very cheap. And if I am using the city's facilities, if I'm swimming in a pool, if I'm using some of the recreational programming, you know, I'm paying for that, right? And so I know that the formula on those cost recoveries are not the same, and they certainly vary. But I do think when it comes to looking at what services the city provide, it's important to highlight and understand that some of those things are just things that we provide. And, and there is no sort of cost recovery structure. And in others, there is a cost recovery structure. And so, and so I think again, as we, as we look at priorities are at a very macro level, and actual very specific sort of projects are things that we want to see accomplished. It's not insignificant that some of those may generate their own revenue.
And council member, you're absolutely right. So jumping out of the financial outlook, which again, as the staff develops the recommended operating budget, you'll hear more about the general fund, which is your primary fund for funding most city services. So next slide, please. So this little slide is something that our firm put together based on analysis in a number of jurisdictions. It's just kind of a reality check. It's not meant to, to say anything more than that. But the fact of the matter is, the city manager and the rest of the management staff spend most of their time running the city, which is why you hire them. And things come up on a day-to-day basis that take their time, and they're managing and moving the city forward. Then there's things that come out of the blue, and then there's time for new initiatives, because most work never goes away. You just take on new things, and it's not often that you can say that, well, whatever program is now done and it disappears. It may shift in phases and not take as much time, but not many things the city provides go away. So again, it's just something to keep in mind. It's not a cop-out to say that, well, staff doesn't have time to do that. But it's a reality that your staff that comes to work every day is busy providing police protection, fire protection, parks in a wreck, library, community development, you name it. If applications come in the door for development, we've heard some comments about development, that the pace of development is very high right now, and it can easily overwhelm the staff. They're just trying to deal with the number of applications that come in, and you're wanting to make sure that the public has access to those as well, and that you move people through the process in a timely fashion. So understand there's a lot that goes on. It's sort of that iceberg. The majority of it is below the level of the water, and there's a little bit that sticks out of the top, that that's sort of what the public sees. But there's a lot of things that go on day in and day out as people pick up the trash and clean the parks. Next slide, please. So some of the key challenges when I spoke to council members, these were highlighted, and in a number of cases, more than one council member mentioned these. So wanted to pause here and take a moment. We're going to delve into these a little bit more later in some respect. But I wanted to stop and ask the council members to, to comment on their thoughts when we have these subject items up here. You know, what does that mean to them, and why do they see this as a particular challenge for the city?
Reflection. Some of these seem less like challenges and more like the opportunity side. So for example, improving communication and engagement isn't a challenge, but maybe the challenge is communication and engagement that's inequitably accessible or inaccessible. And I want to make sure that we as a team are clear about what the challenge is, because it seems more oriented towards solutioning. So for that, for planning for emergencies, creating a vibrant downtown, things like that. I want to make sure, yeah, just noticing.
You're absolutely right, council member. A lot of challenges, there are also opportunities. The question that I posed to the council members was, what are the key challenges? Because that usually elicits their response. But you're right, there are also opportunities to make improvements in the city's systems and processes and implement new ways of doing business. So this is the food for thought part of the exercise to hopefully get you thinking as we move forward with the balance of our meeting. But for instance, you know, what does it mean to create a vibrant downtown? When we talk about climate change, what are your thoughts behind that? We've heard a lot, sadly, because of recent climatic events, about, about planning for emergencies. You, you don't own an electric utility, but yet when the electric utility has people out of power for weeks at a time, it affects your constituents. So what's the proper role for the city in addressing that? So thought we could just take a few minutes to try to get a little dialogue going about these issues. Maybe, you know, the first one, it's forging a vision for the city and priority setting. I had an opportunity to review some of your prior council meetings, and hopefully today's exercise is something that the council members embrace and that you like this process in terms of forging a broader vision and setting more global priorities, rather than having to choose from the long laundry list of projects. So I'm going to pause for a minute, and I'm going to encourage council members to opine. Usually council members are not, are not shy people. They speak up. So let me encourage the council.
Thank you, Steve. I think that that first box to me is one of our key challenges. And I would actually even separate it out into two, separating the vision from the priority setting. So I think Menlo Park is a beautiful community with people who moved here because they absolutely love the tree-lined streets and the community feel and everything. And I think with the explosion of tech and being in the heart of Silicon Valley, our community, like all of the peninsula and all of the valley, is undergoing a lot of pressures and changes. And I think what we do at this moment in terms of where we go from here, based having on our past and our history and what drew people to Menlo Park versus where we may need to go because of state mandates or environmental concerns or what have you. And I think that might be the crux of a lot of the challenges that our community is facing. And I think it plays out in a lot of the day-to-day decision-making that we do on council throughout the year on different ways people lean towards certain issues. And I don't know if, you know, we're all going to, five of us or the whole city is going to come together on a perfect vision. I have a friend that's on the school board, and they have a very clear vision of like high-quality education. And you could say that our, our vision or mission for the city is like to have a wonderful city. But what that means for each person can mean something very different. And so, so I think knowing kind of what we're trying to achieve, each one of us, can be very different. And so I think that tends to be a little bit of a tension that we have. And I don't know if we'll ever resolve it, you know, because we're all individuals. But, and then it makes it different what priorities stem from that vision. So if we all have different visions- So if we all have different visions and then we have different priorities. So I'm not sure quite how we resolved it or if it's resolvable. But it plays out every election and every decision that we make. So that that for me is kind of the crux of of all of this.
Yeah, I think adding adding to a little bit of what the mayor was saying, it's, you know, we can talk about challenges and norms and the macro level direction of the city. But as I I say, this is generally an exercise of counting to three. Where do you have you have free votes? Where do you have support to to move forward? Again, whether it's at the macro level or or our very specific project. For me, like I look at at these challenges and I know you 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 set focus on forging a vision for the city and setting priorities. But for for me, the buckets to to these challenges and a lot of the other things that the city tackles are what do we have exclusive control over to impact the outcome and the lives of residents? And what are we playing a role in? So if I think of something like improving communication and engagement, if we're talking about it from the city, then we have exclusive control over over that and and having an impact on that. Staff vacancies and capacity, we have exclusive control over that. To some degree, planning for emergencies, how we look at emergencies and when to plan them, we have exclusive control over. But even like if you think of something like creating a vibrant downtown, we play a role in that. But the extent to which a vibrant downtown includes like, you know, businesses and other other stakeholders, we don't create businesses and we can't, we can't force a restaurant to to open up like, right? We can try to create an environment where we think it is easier for a restaurateur to say, hey, I want to come to Menlo Park. Again, with climate change, you know, tomorrow Menlo Park could go to net zero in in terms of like carbon emissions. And it wouldn't have any impact on climate change or on 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 those issues. And I'm not saying that that doesn't mean that we don't have a role to play. But if the outcome is on a macro and global level improving and and sort of reducing the impacts of carbon emissions and preparing for climate change, it is something above which Menlo Park plays just a very minor role. Housing, again, we can create, in theory, an environment where a developer, and especially as we're looking at affordable housing, might be more inclined to consider Menlo Park. But even still, we don't build housing. And and so and and so I I think understanding like where we are key stakeholders and understanding where we have exclusive control is really important. And generally going back to priorities as as the mayor was saying, I've always wanted to lean into those priorities where I feel we have exclusive control, where the actual impact, the outcome, we can deliver or we have more control and that that is something that then has a a direct impact on the the lives of residents.
Thank you, and I appreciate what you just said, Councilmember Combs. Because it is, it makes complete sense. Why set priorities that we actually can't deliver on? What I wanted to add to this list, that's a key challenge. And this is something that I experienced for myself on Tuesday, which I'm sure other council members have experienced, especially those that have been on council for more than two years. And that is meeting fatigue, meetings that go past 11 o'clock. I have said this before, I vote no each time you ask me, can we go past 11? And it's not because of my schedule, but I find that the impacts on my health have are harmful, being up until one, two o'clock in the morning, because no, we don't go to sleep as soon as we get home. We are up thinking about, I voted no, I voted yes. Councilmember so and so said so and so, did I hear it right? I mean, you still think about the meeting. And so a key challenge, I believe, is having meetings that are set at a realistic time for council members to be fully engaged and still have a life after the meeting.
Earlier in the conversation, we were talking about council norms. And should you revisit that in a council meeting policy? That would certainly be something you may want to include. I I know of a city that they stop at 11 no matter what because they know that after 11, you're sort of so kind of punch drunk that you can't make good decisions, at least in that city. And so they don't go past. So that might be something to to take a look at in your in your council rules, if there's consensus among the council. And and I, if if I may, I I just want to mention to Councilmember Combs comments, I think you're right, you're spot on. As a council, you are being asked by lots of people for all good reasons to adopt all kinds of policies that are aimed at providing housing for everyone or saving the environment. These are all very good things, but you're having to balance that with your other constituencies of, well, if you do this, what's the the rate impact? Let's say, or the cost? How do you influence that? When I was a city manager, people would always say, well, why can't you get X restaurant into the city? And I would go in a long explanation of, well, I can try to create all kinds of conditions to try to lure them here. But in the end, they have to make a deal with a private property owner to lease a property. So there's only so much the city can do. And and you're all to be commended because every couple of weeks, you're here struggling and grappling with those issues. And so I just wanted to make note of that. Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, thank you. A reflection back on on that, Mr. Mermel and what
Steve, please.
Steve, and what Councilmember Combs shared is that while we play a role, I'm also thinking about how important city council is in creating really powerful enabling conditions with the ordinances we pass, with the zoning that we're going to be doing later this year, with the permit requirements that we require or don't require, what grants we seek out to support different projects and investments. And so, for example, on the topic of climate change of, you know, the percentage of our emissions, I agree, is so 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 tiny. But also when I see climate change on that list, I think about adaptation. And I think about what are we doing as a city to protect all of our residents by creating a levy or or doing, you know, finding affordable flood insurance for for residents and finding other ways that we can definitely like do what is in our scope and in our community to protect. And to the point about the the vibrancy of downtown or housing, that's where I come to those enabling conditions that I think we are so critical in shaping while we can't bring a specific restaurant or a specific kind of development. We can make it a lot more attractive for some something like that to happen, which makes me exciting excited. And a little note to what Vice Mayor shared in the article that Steve shared, it said, address the the need for reasonable hours. And I completely agree with the the benefit for council as well as for the public. If you want to be a body that is accessible, that is deeply responsive and accountable to our community, we need to make it so hardworking families, so young people, so everyone can participate in those meetings. And so I'd be excited to explore that at a a later date on the norms. Thank you.
So go ahead.
Steve, yeah, I really appreciate hearing the perspectives of my colleagues. The framing that Councilmember Combs gave, it makes perfect sense. And, you know, there's other ways to look at it too. So when I think about the role that we sit in and the levers at our disposal and the challenges facing our community, our state, our world, I try to think of what is my role and how can I impact, you know, these issues within my control? And so I think sometimes, so so for climate change, even though we might only, you know, contribute X amount of climate, you know, are there opportunities where we can spark change, given our, we've gone through this a million times, the leadership position where we are, who watches us, et cetera? So I think it's important and I think sometimes we get, you know, so passionate about our point of view that we can dismiss the other's point of view as just wrong. I think we're all right and I think sometimes it's just the way we look at it is different. But I really respect those who want to focus on, you know, the exact things that we have control over. And I know that there's others who are looking at their local government to do whatever is in their power to impact larger issues. So I think going back to the article that you shared, it's important that we respect each other's positions and keep it at, you know, the policy and the conversation at the higher level. And, you know, it's not about one of us being right or one of us being wrong, it's that there's just different ways to look at, you know, an issue. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mayor. You're makes me think of the phrase, you know, think globally, act locally. And for someone who's been around local government for a long time, I can tell you that what happens and what is, a city will adopt a policy and cities will say, wow, that's really out there. But then give it a couple of years and now the majority of cities have adopted that policy. And then if you're one of those outliers that hasn't adopted that policy, it's like, what's wrong with you? Why haven't you adopted that? So the change is incremental, but over time, we see this as cities up and down. There's 488 cities in the state of California as they start to adopt various positions on policies. It does move the deal because of how many people live within cities. So starting, you know, being an early adopter can sometimes be painful, but ultimately the herd catches catches up. So that's great.
And I just add a little bit more, and that's on some of these issues. First of all, our residents and I think all of us are deeply concerned and very much want to, for example, have a vibrant downtown. And while we cannot regulate how many of a certain kind of store or restaurant or anything else is there, certainly we can influence it. And I think it's very important to make those, to take those steps, not saying that anyone was saying it wasn't. But just, I think it is really important to do that. On climate change, Menlo Park is front and center with sea level rise. And so everything we can do is important to do. So even though we are only, it doesn't overall change the global effect, we are having a huge influence. And even on our specific community and so much of climate change with the new technology actually is helping individual residents with their health impacts, both within a neighborhood, but also just within a home. So I think it's really important to make sure that we look at all the different levels as we are looking at what our priorities are. And I guess one of the challenges that I see is just how many priorities we have and whether sometimes it seems like we're trying to do so many priorities, so many different projects that each one just creeps along. Whereas perhaps if we tried to do less and actually finished one and then moved on to the next, it might make more, just feel better, very honestly. And and people would see results as opposed to just inching so many priorities ahead.
That's a great segue. We'll get into that in a few minutes. It's also important, again, as the council sets high level goals and priorities, again, let's use climate change because it's the perfect example. And it's the perfect example because there's any number of objectives that fall under that category. So while a member of the public may advocate for one particular objective because they feel that's the key or that's the most important one, as an organization, you have the ability to say, well, what are we doing in the area of climate change? And as the city manager works with the staff to develop the work plans and develop the budget, that's the process to identify what are the objectives that we can put under the council category, assuming just for the sake of discussion, that that is a council priority. And in any given year, there's things that can be done. If resources, if resources are limited, it may be harder in some years, but there's always something that can be done. That's a good way to think of this. The council sets the big umbrella of what your policy initiatives are, what your goals are. And then you allow the manager to work with the staff to say, okay, what objectives can we put to move that forward? In some years, you'll move further and faster, in some years, because the nature of the objectives may take longer, be more difficult, but you'll ultimately keep moving and you're never going to be done. You're never going to be done. There there may be some objectives that over time you can say, well, that's no longer our highest priority because we've largely addressed it. But you're, that's the nature of the organization, you're always going to be working on things. They just may not be your four top high priorities for the subsequent year. So we'll get to that. But before we do that and before we let you have your lunch, want to take a few minutes to turn back to what you've been doing. In your packet, you received a couple of attachments and I believe these are also posted on the on on the city's website. This was from the last time that you established, I thought it was interesting, you established both a council priorities and a work plan. Take and eat it too, compliments. But it's a lot, it's an awful lot. And this might be an appropriate time to turn to the city manager or the assistant city manager just to provide a a brief update because I know that you heard this back in January. But again, it's it also benefits the public to understand that their city government is doing a lot for them. So, Mr. City Manager.
Um, Steve, may I interrupt for just a moment? For time management sake, for those needing a bio break, when is in, is there a time, a natural break coming up that you were planning? Okay. Okay. I I think we need a five minute break right now. Okay, thank you. And that's a tight five minutes, council. That's not a 10 minute, a five minute.
Livid for this. Livid for this. So I, I think we're up to the point where I think the city manager was asking the assistant city manager to So I, I think we're up to the point where I think the city manager was asking the assistant city manager to just to touch briefly on where you are in terms of your, your work plan and all the priorities that you set previously. just to touch briefly on where you are in terms of your, your work plan and all the priorities that you set previously.
Yes, thank you. If we could have the next slide, City Clerk. Yes, thank you. If we could have the next slide, City Clerk. So we will just very, very briefly go through these. I'm just pointing out that attachment C to the staff report So we will just very, very briefly go through these. I'm just pointing out that attachment C to the staff report contains the priorities and the work plan items that were from 2021 to 2022. contains the priorities and the work plan items that were from 2021 to 2022. So if you could go to the next slide, please. So if you could go to the next slide, please. And there's a very long list and we have a And there's a very long list and we have a an opportunity to revisit a lot of the carryover items from that list that were in progress or on hold for various reasons as we develop our next work plan an opportunity to revisit a lot of the carryover items from that list that were in progress or on hold for various reasons as we develop our next work plan at a later date this spring. at a later date this spring. But the, the main focus for this part of the presentation is the next slide. But the, the main focus for this part of the presentation is the next slide. And it is an example of some of the significant council-directed projects or items that And it is an example of some of the significant council-directed projects or items that really require a significant allocation of staff time. And these are things that are underway and really require a significant allocation of staff time. And these are things that are underway and in the works across all of our departments. And we could go through one by one and just briefly highlight them. in the works across all of our departments. And we could go through one by one and just briefly highlight them. And I think what you'll see as we work through these items is that there is a lot of alignment probably with And I think what you'll see as we work through these items is that there is a lot of alignment probably with what you're thinking in terms of high priorities on council. what you're thinking in terms of high priorities on council. But the first one is that multiple departments are implementing new technology to improve our efficiency and operations But the first one is that multiple departments are implementing new technology to improve our efficiency and operations and customer service. and customer service. Another, another Another, another big, big item that is cuts across departments is just improving and actually evaluating and improving our public engagement strategies. big, big item that is, cuts across departments is just improving and actually evaluating and improving our public engagement strategies. And recently, emergency preparedness communications was highlighted during the storms. And recently, emergency preparedness communications was highlighted during the, the storms. Another big item is maintaining a productive workforce and part of that is recruiting for our key vacancies. Another big item is maintaining a productive workforce and part of that is recruiting for our key vacancies. You heard of about our vacancy rate recently in a report at a city council meeting. You heard of, about our vacancy rate recently in a report at a city council meeting. And so we really are focused on that. Another part of that is also retaining our talented people that work in Menlo Park too. And so we really are focused on that. Another part of that is also retaining our talented people that work in Menlo Park too. And we're, you know, we're really appreciative of our staff and we want to do everything we can to make this a And we're, you know, we're really appreciative of our staff and we want to do everything we can to make this a productive work environment where they feel like they belong. productive work environment where they feel like they belong. And then we, we do have our upcoming negotiations with labor groups this spring as well. And then we, we do have our upcoming negotiations with labor groups this spring as well. Really big goal for Menlo Park is climate action. Really big goal for Menlo Park is climate action. And some of the things that are on the docket this year are reach codes 2.0. And some of the things that are on the docket this year are reach codes 2.0. We would love to launch a really robust public education campaign around electrification as well. We would love to launch a really robust public education campaign around electrification as well. And, and then finally, we continue to make progress in reducing fossil fuels at our city facilities. And that's just replacing water heaters, installing EV charging. And, and then finally, we continue to make progress in reducing fossil fuels at our city facilities. And that's just replacing water heaters, installing EV charging. And we're making a lot of progress on that as well. And we're making a lot of progress on that as well. Congratulations on adopting the housing element. Now we get into the work of actually implementing all the components of the housing element. So that's, that's next on our list. Congratulations on adopting the housing element. Now we get into the work of actually implementing all the components of the housing element. So that's, that's next on our list. And we're, we're also working on our first ever environmental justice element and, and we are also working on the safety element as well. And we're, we're also working on our first ever environmental justice element and, and we are also working on the safety element as well. And then really big category, especially for our public works department is advancing And then really big category, especially for our public works department, is advancing many transportation projects that kind of fall under that theme of safe streets, many transportation projects that kind of fall under that theme of safe streets, just to enhance safety and quality of life. And then finally, I'm just continuing to get through just to enhance safety and quality of life. And then finally, I'm just continuing to get through all of our, you know, demands for development projects and the, and the work that comes out of community development department for that. all of our, you know, demands for development projects and the, and the work that comes out of community development department for that. You can find these items listed and more in attachment B of the staff report too. You can find these items listed and more in attachment B of the staff report too.
So again, Mayor and Council, I think it's helpful for the public to understand that So again, Mayor and Council, I think it's helpful for the public to understand that even if as a result of today's workshop, the council doesn't select a particular even if as a result of today's workshop, the council doesn't select a particular priority item for next fiscal year, priority item for next fiscal year, through the work that's going on already that you've initiated, through the work that's going on already that you've initiated, there's a lot being done that hits really every topic under the sun. there's a lot being done that hits really every topic under the sun. Because again, that's how the city operates. And so you're moving forward on a variety of fronts. Because again, that's how the city operates. And so you're moving forward on a variety of fronts. Your purpose here today is to try to focus more broadly Your purpose here today is to try to focus more broadly where you want to see the city manager and his staff and the budget and in the work plan put their effort for the coming year. where you want to see the city manager and his staff and the budget and in the work plan put their effort for the coming year. But it doesn't mean that work on other things just stops. If the council doesn't select something as a priority, But it doesn't mean that work on other things just stops. If the council doesn't select something as a priority, it doesn't mean that the staff says, well, then we take it off our work plan. A lot of these things are, are on their work plan and they do move forward it doesn't mean that the staff says, well, then we take it off our work plan. A lot of these things are, are on their work plan and they do move forward either because either because variety of factors that influence that. Some things are state mandates you have to comply with, for instance, getting your housing element done. variety of factors that influence that. Some things are state mandates you have to comply with, for instance, getting your housing element done. Other thing, development projects, the projects walk through the door and you have to process the applications. Other thing, development projects, the projects walk through the door and you have to process the applications. So you're not going to avoid the work, but it's really as an organization, how you're prioritizing and setting your major goals, your big rocks for the next fiscal year. So you're not going to avoid the work, but it's really as an organization, how you're prioritizing and setting your major goals, your big rocks for the next fiscal year.
Steve, and maybe this is for the city manager or assistant city manager, this is kind of a devilish question. Steve, and maybe this is for the city manager or assistant city manager, this is kind of a devilish question. So let's just say that knowing that staff is already going to be working on these things. So let's just say that knowing that staff is already going to be working on these things. As a council member, I'm like, well, if I only get, if I only have four stickers As a council member, I'm like, well, if I only get, if I only have four stickers to pick priorities, and I know you're already working on this, maybe I'll pick. to pick priorities, and I know you're already working on this, maybe I'll pick. So what's the difference in picking a, for us to pick it versus not pick it in terms, like, let's take climate action for an example. So what's the difference in picking a, for us to pick it versus not pick it in terms, like, let's take climate action for an example. So it's on the list that staff is already working on and it's a potential council priority. So it's on the list that staff is already working on and it's a potential council priority. So how would it differ in terms of staff resources and staff So how would it differ in terms of staff resources and staff work plan effort if it were to be just left as a staff-driven, not staff-driven, but kind of work plan effort if it were to be just left as a staff-driven, not staff-driven, but kind of cleanup thing versus a priority, just so we can all understand kind of the impact of what we're doing? cleanup thing versus a priority, just so we can all understand kind of the impact of what we're doing?
I'll pause to see if the manager would like me to take a stab at that or? I'll pause to see if the manager would like me to take a stab at that or?
Sure, maybe a team effort. So if you want to start and then Stephen May as well. Sure, maybe a team effort. So if you want to start and then Stephen May as well.
Sure. Well, what I would say Sure. Well, what I would say is, yeah, you can, you, you can do that clever, clever mayor. is, yeah, you can, you, you can do that clever, clever mayor. But also some of it's messaging to your constituents who you meet with daily and they say, well, But also some of it's messaging to your constituents who you meet with daily and they say, well, what are the priorities for the city? Or isn't climate action what are the priorities for the city? Or isn't climate action an important priority for the city? And you said, an important priority for the city? And you want to said, you say, well, it is because we've made it a priority. you say, well, it is because we've made it a priority. Or you say, well, we didn't make it a council priority because there's a lot going on there anyway. Or you say, well, we didn't make it a council priority because there's a lot going on there anyway. You have to deal with, with that interaction and that fallout from that. You have to deal with, with that interaction and that fallout from that. Also, by picking something as a priority, you're conveying to the manager and to the staff that Also, by picking something as a priority, you're conveying to the manager and to the staff that the council as a body is looking to see some action in that area over the next fiscal year. the council as a body is looking to see some action in that area over the next fiscal year. That sends the message to staff that, to work with the departments to say, That sends the message to staff that, to work with the departments to say, well, what meat are we going to put on the bone of this priority item? Because the council's going to want well, what meat are we going to put on the bone of this priority item? Because the council's going to want at the end of the year to say, here's what we have to show for that. And let's stop using climate action. Let's say, safe streets. at the end of the year to say, here's what we have to show for that. And let's stop using climate action. Let's say, safe streets. What have we done to, to move that forward? What have we done to, to move that forward? So it sets the tone for the organization. So it sets the tone for the organization. Now, if, if you're confident that you don't need to pick something because it's happening in any way, Now, if, if you're confident that you don't need to pick something because it's happening in any way, I suppose in, in a clever sort of way, that works too. I suppose in, in a clever sort of way, that works too. But I think as an organization, as, as a body, when the council says this is our priority, But I think as an organization, as, as a body, when the council says this is our priority, it, it has weight and it, it ripples into the work plan of the organization. it, it has weight and it, it ripples into the work plan of the organization. But it's not, not clever. But it's not, not clever.
So one thing I would add is we've established a webpage called menlopark.gov/priorities. So one thing I would add is we've established a webpage called menlopark.gov/priorities. And that is our one stop shop for really communicating to the public what the council's focused on And that is our one stop shop for really communicating to the public what the council's focused on in terms of those high level priorities and also where we will report back out in terms of those high level priorities and also where we will report back out on, on those things. So it's, it is a communications tool, kind of what Steve was talking about. on, on those things. So it's, it is a communications tool, kind of what Steve was talking about. And we would love to use that webpage as our, you know, as, where residents can go to just figure out what Menlo Park is all about And we would love to use that webpage as our, you know, as, where residents can go to just figure out what Menlo Park is all about through the current cycle with priorities. The other thing I'd like to point out is through the current cycle with priorities. The other thing I'd like to point out is that list that we went through of significant projects that require an allocation of staff time. that list that we went through of significant projects that require an allocation of staff time. After setting high level priorities, that's really what we take and move forward and, and set After setting high level priorities, that's really what we take and move forward and, and set significant allocations of staff time. And you'll see in the attachment that there's a column significant allocations of staff time. And you'll see in the attachment that there's a column that displays that displays a master plan or direction that occurred on any of those significant items. And you'll see that most of this a master plan or direction that occurred on any of those significant items. And you'll see that most of this list is, is actually from prior council direction. So list is, is actually from prior council direction. So it's, you know, it's closing the loop on, on where this all came from. And I think that's what we want to continue doing with the high level it's, you know, it's closing the loop on, on where this all came from. And I think that's what we want to continue doing with the high level priorities after today. priorities after today.
Thank you. And I wasn't planning necessarily on being clever and gaming the system. I just wanted to Thank you. And I wasn't planning necessarily on being clever and gaming the system. I just wanted to highlight that for people watching and for us. highlight that for people watching and for us.
Totally fair and appropriate question. Totally fair and appropriate question. This would be a good time This would be a good time because next we're going to get into really drilling in and going through the exercise of setting those priorities. Now would be a good time to take our little because next we're going to get into really drilling in and going through the exercise of setting those priorities. Now would be a good time to take our little lunch break. I think in the interest of time, if we could keep it to about 20 minutes, lunch break. I think in the interest of time, if we could keep it to about 20 minutes, which probably spills a little bit past that. which probably spills a little bit past that. So if I say 20, it becomes 30. If I said 30, it's 40. So I'll say 20. So if I say 20, it becomes 30. If I said 30, it's 40. So I'll say 20. If that's acceptable to the, to the mayor and the council, this would be a good break. If that's acceptable to the, to the mayor and the council, this would be a good break.
Yeah, or even 15. I, I don't know. 20. I'm hearing 20. Okay, I'm hearing 20. Yeah, or even 15. I, I don't know. 20. I'm hearing 20. Okay, I'm hearing 20. I just want to make sure we, I'm trying to be very cognizant of time. I just want to make sure we, I'm trying to be very cognizant of time. I know we're supposed to end at two and we still have. I know we're supposed to end at two and we still have.
We'll get, we'll get you. We'll get, we'll get you.
You'll get us there. Okay. You'll get us there. Okay. Okay, so 12:30, we will reconvene. Thank you. Okay, so 12:30, we will reconvene. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
...
Okay, having our council back at our in-person days. Mayor Willis, and let's reconvene the meeting.
Thank you, and thank you to the members of the public for your patience. We had a little delay in our lunch arriving, and then we thought it might be best to do the majority of our chewing out of the camera's lens. I hope that those of you at home had a lovely lunch, and I'm going to turn the facilitation back over to Steve. Steve, please continue.
Thank you, Mayor. We could get the presentation back up. And jump to the next slide, please. Okay, so now we're getting down to the real fun part, in addition to eating. When I interviewed the council members, the eight items above on this slide represent what were the priorities that were mentioned by the council members. We're going to go through them in a little greater detail in a moment, but just to recap, emergency, again, in not priority order, just in no particular order. Council members cited emergency preparedness, obviously recent occurrences brought that to the forefront. Climate action, which we've talked about a bit today, activating the downtown area, safe streets. And we'll go into what each of these means in a few minutes, a little deeper. Housing, advancing equity, organizational effectiveness, and community engagement. But before we put the council to it, we thought it would be a good idea to spend a few minutes to have the assistant city manager just recap what he mentioned at the beginning of the meeting regarding the community input that you allowed through your website. So wanted to jump to the next slide, please.
Great, thank you. So we received three hundred and ninety-two online submissions through a web form, and these are the main results shown on the slide. The principal priority raised in about forty-one percent of those submissions was for a quiet zone related to train noise. The second most common mention was for pickleball opportunities. That came in at about twenty-five percent of submissions, and then followed by seventeen percent for preserving or improving tennis opportunities. Another big theme was for safe streets, mainly related to bicycle and pedestrian safety, but also for traffic at fourteen percent. Another major area was environmental sustainability. Most of the comments were in favor of work on electrification and climate action. And then there were other themes as well, like emergency preparedness, recreation opportunities, housing and downtown vibrancy. And one thing I'd like to say is that for many of these areas, there's work underway. And for the quiet zone, for example, this was a twenty-twenty-one adopted priority of the city council, actually. And it's currently in progress. And I checked in with staff, and they would like me to announce that on March twenty-third, which is next Thursday at six P M., there will be a public workshop to provide additional information about the process of establishing a quiet zone and the investments that are required within Menlo Park, and then also at the Palo Alto Avenue at grade crossing in Palo Alto as well. So more information is available at menlopark.gov/quietzone. It's also on our citywide calendar on the website. But we've been working with a consultant on a quiet zone study, so this workshop is kind of an outcome of that. In regards to pickleball, on earlier this year, on February twenty-eighth, the city council reviewed a proposed process and timeline to develop a focused addendum to the Parks and Recreation Facilities Master Plan, and that will include an analysis of pickleball opportunities. And that process to create that addendum will include really robust community input. We will be using data on pickleball usage, facility data, and more. So more to come on that topic. We are anticipating that that process will culminate in the city council's approval of a focused master plan this summer, the addendum this summer. Safe streets as another large topic here. There's actually multiple adopted city council priorities from twenty-twenty-one that fall under this category, and they are included in that attachment to the staff report. I won't get into all of them, but just know that our Public Works Department in particular really has a pretty high workload in terms of transportation safety projects underway, and they're detailed in the staff in the attachment as well. Environmental sustainability. Many of the Climate Action Plan goals were adopted priorities by the council in the past. Electrification has been a main, a main one for cap number one, goal number one. I talked about earlier that we're working on Reach Codes two point O and the launch of our public education campaign, and so much more. But I do want to highlight that as a small city, we actually now have a three-person team dedicated to sustainability, which is pretty remarkable. And so there is significant alignment, I think, on our workforce with sustainability goals. And and in some of the other themes that showed up, there's, there's many more things going on, too. You know, if we, if we looked at housing, for example, we'll be implementing so many of the components of the housing element and more. We have a strong track record with affordable housing development and our inclusionary housing ordinance. So I'm happy to share more on all of these with the public, too.
Um, thank you so much, Assistant City Manager. I'd love to follow up with just a couple of questions on behalf of the residents who have been writing in, who came today to speak on kind of, I'll call them one-off priority requests. So let's say tobacco-free multifamily units as an example. So how, or like I've gotten emails from people that want an eBay, e-bike rebate program, or people wrote in specifically about Gilbert Avenue. How does, is, is, I realize that the staff has been receiving messages from folks. How do those fall under the strategic framework? And then is today, is this round of resident input kind of the only opportunity all year people have to raise things? Like, what do we do with the request for tobacco-free buildings? If it's not in the priority list, if it's not something the council has said, we're interested in working on that. How does this get incorporated into anyone's workload?
So we're very grateful for the public writing into us, and actually staff are reviewing this list right now to see how it falls into, you know, potential projects. We will be developing as a next step our work plan, which is much more detailed and has a project list. And so at that time, I think what the council could do is actually review a lot of the submissions that we receive from the public and let us know if some of those projects are things you'd like us to look into and research. But this isn't the only opportunity for the public to get in touch with us. Actually, we encourage anyone to get in touch with us at any time of the year with their with their thoughts or opinions or, you know, preferred projects, or get in touch with the council especially. But there, this, today's high level, but a lot of these submissions were much more specific, so I think they'll factor in more greatly as we kind of work through the budget development process for the next fiscal year.
Okay, so just to reiterate, for those members of the public who have kind of specific projects, stay tuned between now and the adoption of the budget, which takes place at the end of June. We're on a fiscal year calendar that starts July first. And there'll be the work plan development, and then the money will be allocated for those projects. So for things that don't require necessarily a budget allocation, but maybe some staff resources, is it part of that same process, or how do they get something kind of on the agenda or in front of council as a consideration?
In terms of a new submission or things that we received already, either one. But, you know, we do need to do a bit of research on some of these submissions to determine how much staff effort is required. And that's kind of the, the process, I think, we need to kind of go back and forth with the council on with, you know, maybe, maybe some of these are the small stones that we can kind of put into the bucket.
And just a follow-up question. It sounds like in our normal agendas, there's also a time for public comment when anyone could ask or share something not related to agenda items that we might be talking about that day. So is that also a place where people could share input on these things?
Definitely, that's a great point.
So, but is as part of the process today, is there some response or signal we can provide to the public for those items that are not going to be a priority? And so I'm thinking where, where there isn't, like, in my, my exercise of counting to three, or where that doesn't work. And I'm only saying that in context of the triangle annexation folks, who I, as long as I've been a planning commissioner and city council person have been regularly showing up to these goals, priority sessions, and expressing their desire to have some movement on this. And I know previously, Councilmember Mueller, who is not here anymore, was advocating for them to some degree, not that, you know, being, you know, completely real, not that advocacy was ultimately successful because they're still here, showing up, trying to get some traction. But I do think that because in past iterations of this, this meeting, there was clear that there were some things that the council would not move forward from. And so I think it could be a little like, if it's just like, okay, you've submitted this, and then maybe a council member raises it and to, to, to staff, but the resident doesn't necessarily have any visibility into that. But because there is no, like, like interest in pursuing it, I think it could be a little disappointing that this process, if I'm, if I'm there looking for, to advocate for annexation or advocate for ordinance prohibiting smoking and multifamily units that like, I submitted it, there was this big public event. But then, like, this specific thing didn't, didn't get sort of, I didn't get any real response.
Yeah, I don't know. You were looking at me, but I don't know, but I agree that I think the goal of me asking these questions was to have transparency for the residents of what's going to happen with their hopes and dreams so that they know whether to give up and wait for next year, or to keep going to the, the work plan meeting and then the budget meeting. So City Manager Murphy, or Steve.
Yeah, and I just want to say, like, to my point, like, if it's a no, then when do they get that no? And is there a way in which, or is it like you have to have five, five people who have wrote in to give you a no? Because, you know, there was an ask and, and the submitted feedback for a city, a committee on racial reparations, right? And so this is separate from, from, like, even the climate change discussion, we've you know, made lots of, of, of a headway in that area, and it's clear that that's, that that's a priority. But now that would be something net new completely. As far as I know, the council hasn't discussed a, a racial reparations committee or any, any, and so like, is that person going to get an answer? And, and when do they get that answer?
And I, well, I'll, but I don't think it's going to happen today because we would basically be going on a separate pathway that we don't have the time for, but I'll turn it over to our professional staff.
If I may, let me speak generally, and then the city ma, city manager may have some specific comments for how things work here in Menlo Park. Again, having been in the public administration game a pretty long time and worked with a number of council members. It's a, it's an excellent question, because the public provides feedback, and they say, I'm interested in X. Unfortunately, resources aren't such, but it's not necessarily efficient either to have a city just simply be reacting to what one resident may ask for. And that's why residents will often team up or submit a petition. If a hundred people feel this way, then you should do it, right? One size doesn't fit all. I would say that depending on the nature of the issue is how it gets addressed. The Assistant City Manager indicated that the city manager and he and the entire executive team is going to review the near four hundred comments that you received. It's possible that a number of those items are already on some department's work plan, and then it's just a matter of getting back to someone, letting them know, and then they'll feel good. They'll say, hurry up and get to it, but at least they know it's in the hopper, right? Some other issues are really policy decisions. You provide a really great example of a current issue. Should the city council explore reparations? That's something that need, would need to be driven by the council before, in my opinion, before the staff would put time in that. The council could direct the staff, the council could turn to one of its commissions. You have a number of commissions. A lot of cities don't know how to really use their commissions. They should give them work, and they should tell them to go off and look at something. The issue of smoking and multi-unit housing is something that sending it to a commission and allowing more public dialogue around an issue sometimes is helpful to let it reach to a consensus and help shape the policy. So it depends on what the ask is. And I think the public is right to advocate for what they want, but you're not able to do everything. Some things you will do in the, in the matter, of course. Some things will have to wait to consideration in the capital budget or the operating budget. Some things need council policy direction before pursuing that. The issue of annexation is probably one that you'd probably want to have the whole council weigh in before staff works on something as significant as that. So it depends on the nature of the issue, and you have any number of ways to address it. I think what's important is for the city to be clear on how you triage the items and knowing what's the right mechanism or the right path to take it down. And sadly, in some cases, the answer is, no, we're not considering that at this time. Ideas, just because at a certain time you don't act on them, doesn't mean you won't act in the future. Pickleball perhaps is the greatest example, because even though it's been around a long time ago, ten years ago, people weren't talking about it. I spent, you know, my last three years as a city manager scrambling, trying to find pickleball courts and doing deals with the local school district to use their tennis courts, right? and doing deals with the local school district to use their tennis courts, right? So these issues come up, they, they reach a ground swell and then you say, okay, we need to turn our attention to it. So those are some general thoughts about how you need to triage these things and I would turn to the manager.
Great. No, thank you both for raising the question. Thanks for the responses. The only thing I'll add on is that we are, are committed to try to map all the various inputs to, to things. We, we, we may be successful, we may miss something here or there, but today's not the day to necessarily make that decision of what's, what's moving forward or not. But we are looking to kind of be able to report out to the council in April with how we'd be approaching things. And so that would be the opportunity for the members of the public to see where their idea may have landed.
Thank you. And I like the term triage and I'm almost picturing like a flow chart. But I, I think maybe when we get to norms or policies and procedures, this might be a good opportunity to clarify for us. Cause I think if a resident calls us, we all might have a different way of, of bringing it to the city manager, bringing it to the council. Councilmember Nash, did you have something? Oh, Councilmember Taylor, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. And just as a follow-up, it would be helpful to know, because the annexation topic has come up before, if there has been any staff time worked on it, because that would help me. Thank you.
And it seems that we should have an ongoing list of priorities and, or just of requests. And therefore people who are in, the public will know whether or not their request has been put forward and whether to, or whether to put something new forward and also what the status is. There's many different, there's many, many obviously requests that we won't be able to do that are very worthy. And there just isn't enough time. So it'd be good to have that list somewhere public where people can see it. And as we review these, I would imagine we'd want to do this periodically, not just annually, maybe. And I guess I would prefer, rather than have one-offs, to actually be looking at them in some sort of systematic way. And so that when we're talking about having people raise things, what is the best way to do that and how do we track it? And when do we actually have some sort of review of it?
And, and just because I would want to, and completely appreciate and would be supportive of that, of that approach. And it was only because like, I would say that like, if you ask the annexation advocates, like where their project currently stands, they would probably say, I don't, I don't know, like, right? And, and to the extent that those emails or communications we got about like safe storage, like, right? That speaking of triangles has like sort of gone into a Bermuda Triangle of sorts, like where, where, where does that stand? And, and so for me, I think as part of this process, we should understand of giving some definitiveness, like as much as possible in the moment about where those, those, those things stand or some explanation for like why they're, they're not moving forward, not, not staff capacity, not council majority support or.
Totally agree. And I would just like to see that on some sort of, on the priorities webpage or somewhere where people can actually access that.
And at the risk of belaboring it, I would encourage all of you in your one-on-one meetings with the city manager to share with him what you're hearing from your constituents. When he begins to hear sort of the ground swell, he'll know when it's time to move on that. And he can also report to the council members, you know, what, what the status is, whether it's in a work plan or whether it's something that hasn't really achieved critical mass yet. But in the interest of time, because I committed to get you done by two o'clock and I committed to my wife to be home for dinner, which means flying back to Los Angeles. Time to move to the next slide. So now we're going to take a little time and break down those eight priority areas that I heard from the council members, again, in no particular order. The bullet points that you see, we'll start with the first four and then do the, the second four. The bullet points you see are some of the comments that I heard from council members. So this is the council participation time of the meeting. And it would be great if your colleagues could hear from you, what you really mean when you said that it is a priority issue. I've done my best to capture what I thought I heard you say, and I can comment on some of those things. But it's great if your colleagues can hear what you're thinking, because ultimately as a group, you're going to pick four items, because I only gave you four dots. So just to recap them and then I'll open it up for some dialogue. Under emergency preparedness, I had a great conversation with one of the council members about the, the changing natures of threats. We used to always think in California, it's earthquake and now it's earthquake and fire. And now it's earthquake, fire and flood and pandemic and, you know, fill in the blank. The, the threats are, are changing and they're scary. And having some sort of a community, community resiliency plan and a response plan is, is critical. And so that's why we have response times listed under there. And also communication to residents, you, as we talked about before, you're not the power company. But the residents are going to turn to you because you're the leaders of your community. And what is the council's role in a disaster? And what is the staff's role in a disaster? Making sure, again, back to this norms, everyone understanding what their role is, what they're supposed to be doing. There's a lot of examples out there of when people didn't have a good response in place. And so that's how I understand emergency preparedness. We can talk more about that. Activating downtown, I went to one of the nice French restaurants downtown last night and it's a great area. I saw the parking lots and I could see why that's a prime opportunity site for the city. But I also saw some vacant storefronts, which is not uncommon these days. And I also saw, saw some kind of stores that are, I'll just say sort of the second level, second tier type of stores. I won't, I won't bash any particular industry because they're all important and they're all investing in your community. So wanting to create an active downtown. Climate action, we heard a lot about that today. It can be a lot of things, everything from reducing vehicle miles traveled to electrification, shifting off of fossil fuels, having an adaptation plan. And then safe streets, this is everything from being a little more aggressive with traffic enforcement, excuse me, to crack down on speeders, to also making sure that your, your streets are multimodal, that they're safe for people who want to walk and bike as, as well as driving. So those are the first four, let's stop. And let's see if we can get some comments from council members about why you think, if, if this, you, if you think one of those four is a priority and it's something that the council ought to adopt, why?
I'll start. Thank you. I'll start with, well, I'm going to start with activating downtown. Our small businesses are the backbone of our economy. And I would like to actually include something that was suggested earlier about economic development being at the center of this discussion. I think it needs to be included. Downtown is downtown, so we definitely need to invest in it. And, and for me, this will stay a priority. And I didn't know if you wanted us to touch on each one and then we go around or go down the list or?
Hoping for a dialogue amongst the council. So however, you and the mayor choose to proceed, I think it's great if everyone just shares their thoughts. If, if they feel compelled, we'll spend a little time here and then we'll jump to the second set.
I would recommend as a proposal that if a council member wants to go ahead and, and share their thoughts on the slide in front of them. And then we can, or do you want to go topic by topic or, okay, topic by topic? Okay. So Vice Mayor Taylor brought up downtown.
Yes, thank you. A curiosity I have, when we think about activating downtown, I, I too, I'm really excited about the opportunity for economic development, for creating the vibrancy for our residents and small businesses. I'm also thinking about how Menlo Park has the unique ability of, we have our central downtown. It's a large urban area, but we also have two kind of urbanish hubs in Bellhaven and also in District Five around the Sharon Heights Shopping Center. And curiosity around if this economic development activation can or should be inclusive of those two hubs as well. Understanding that downtown is obviously the, the big central heart of our community. And so maybe less of a comment and more of just a curiosity and a, a thought for the council. Thanks.
So I, I mean, if I could, first, again, wanting to be responsive to you and give you my perspective of that. So with Sharon Heights, that's completely private property. It's like, it's, it's, it's not the ability from my perspective for, for us to engage and create, you, you, you know, what we would, you know, to use those, those levers in, in the same way. And, and so like, I think it's like what that, you know, property owner wants to do with their property. And, and I would sort of defer to staff, but I think that they haven't been like that receptive to responding to or engaging the city, I think specifically maybe in connection with the housing element. So I do think that there is like a difference. And I guess with Bellhaven, we would be talking about Willow Road, some of those. And, and again, like if, if there is something as it relates to kind of like, you, you, you know, the frontage, stuff that's in the public right away, like I, I don't, I don't, I don't think that the parking there is, is, is city-owned, but the extent to which that, there, there exists. And I, I certainly think that there, 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 there may be things that, that we can do. I think you could also include like, you know, the, the Menalto sort of strip of businesses that's quasi. But even in that scenario, like I think like the city right away goes like right through the middle of those parking stalls. And so, but in that case, again, like there is the foundation for the city to act in, in a way that I don't think it, it, it has the ability with, with something that's exclusively private property. I, I think for me, if we're, we're on the activating downtown, I, I think, I think the question is like sort of, because we have done some things like, right? Like obviously the, the, the parklets, both the original parklet program and those as it relates to, to the, the pandemic have been things I think the council has unanimously been supportive of. And so for me, I think the question is like, what's, what, what's missing there? I, I mean, is it like the idea of an economic development person who's always advocating for the city and going and making that sell to the restaurateur that you want to come to, to Menlo Park? And then the other thing I, I think would just, just be the, the probably the, the aesthetics of, of downtown. A, you know, we've got those, those sort of like 1970s, 1960s kind of street skate wooden sort of column things that are not that, I, I, please, my apologies, mayor, if you love, love them. See, that's when I, if I go back, like if those things had just been mission style, then they would be, they would be fine today. Like, right? No, no one, no one would be, but they look very dated from this moment. And also I just add on to that, like even though we haven't seen the real impacts of it, the, the downtown specific plan, like right, that, that was a very specific effort to try to get some of the vibrancy in downtown. And we haven't seen those developments on what I would call like Santa Cruz proper. And so like, I, I think part of the question would be, well, what's missing there? To, to sort of get that, 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 that change that, that we want. But, but I mean, again, I'm open, like this doesn't have to be just a downtown thing. But I do, there are certain limits in other spots that, that, that don't exist in downtown that we do have, like I, I think more, more of an ability to, to have, to be a key stakeholder in that change.
So I see, I think we really need an in-house economic development director, which I don't think anyone would disagree with. But I think it's so important to prioritize that and really move on it. I think that using a consultant, the way we are doing is just not satisfactory in any stretch of the imagination. And I see the economic development person as being someone who can look across the entire city and sort of help all businesses in these different shopping areas as well as other businesses and really focus downtown and what can we do there? I think one of the biggest issues that we all see is the vacancy rates, which is mostly driven by the fact that we have, I think, a small number of families who own these properties, have owned them for ages and really don't have the economic incentive to just go out and rent them, unless the right opportunity comes along. And so I think that one of the pieces is looking at what levers we have as a city to encourage them to make those, do something productive with the spaces rather than let them sit or rent them to rug stores, very honestly. I have trouble understanding exactly what should we be doing downtown and making changes with the kiosks and all. I agree with you, Drew, Councilmember Combs. And with some of the other, just the appearance of downtown that would greatly help and make it more enticing place to be with the housing element, where we're very much interested in the parking plazas and doing something there. And to me, it's sort of a chicken egg and I don't, this is where we really need professional staff help as to how do we coordinate those efforts? So I think it's incredibly important, just how do we actually get moving on it in a way that where we're not tripping over ourselves with the parking plazas?
And if I may, I'd like to use Councilmember Nash's comments as just a, saw an opportunity, I don't want to pass it up. And that's exactly what you're doing as a council, you're setting the big priority. You don't have to worry about the objective or the specific yet. That, that falls more on your staff to develop what those objectives would be, whether to hire someone or to do something else. But if the council says revitalizing downtown or revitalizing downtown slash economic development is a high priority, then your professional staff figures it out and comes back to tell you, okay, this is how we're going to sort of eat that elephant.
I, I just don't have to push back because the voters hold me accountable for the results, like, right? And so, and I know, and obviously you're, you're, you have a certain staff bias. Obviously I have an elected bias. And, and I would agree with, like, so activating downtown, that's not enough. Councilmember Nash, of which I agree a hundred percent, has said, we need an economic development director. And so that's a very specific implementation of that, that we agree. And so if the city manager thinks that like, well, I just need to activate downtown, but Councilmember Nash and I believe that that, that, that the key element to that happening is an economic development director, then I, I think we, we have, we have like a conflict, right? Cause I don't see my role as just policy, like, right? My constituents aren't interested in the priorities of the city. They're interested in the fact that there's a pothole in front of their house. And so, and if I say the city has these priorities, they're like, Drew, I have a pothole. And so, and so I, and, and so I'm, I'm, I'm all for this exercise. But I, I think at the end of the day, what people want is an understanding of what are the actual results.
Councilmember, absolutely. It's all about getting results, but everyone has a different role to play. The city manager would not be the smart man that he is if, when he heard multiple council people say, we probably need X. He pursues that, but you don't go fix that, you don't fill that pothole yourself. The council acts as a body, but you don't have to wait for the body to act. You tell the city manager, he tells the public work staff, they go fill the pothole. That's the system.
I also just want to acknowledge straight up that we do have an open position for the economic development director. I know that staff has been working hard to try and fill it and so there is no conflict there.
And it sounds like a great opportunity.
Um, okay, a couple of things. One is for downtown, agree pretty much with everything my colleague said. The other piece would be zoning, if we're talking about the levers under our control. So I noticed that under housing, so kind of sometimes some of these priorities overlap. So zoning, not just the parking lots, but looking at kind of a visioning of, kind of like revisiting the downtown specific plan in terms of zoning, which I know would give the city manager a heart attack probably. So the other things are just clarifying questions. So I'm happy to talk through activating downtown. I think it's absolutely critical that we do all these things. I'm worried about how many stickies I get and whether it's going to be one of my stickies. So we can participate in these conversations. If it doesn't get our collective sticky, I guess I'm going back to what happens to this. And then time check is 116. And I think we're going to do this for the seven other priorities and then do the sticky exercise. So just wanted to, to flag that for you.
Right. So here's part of the challenge, because again, you're council members and you're all about making the community better. Try to resist the urge to solve the problem today. You don't have to come up with the solution to having safe streets or you don't have to revitalize, revision downtown here today. or you don't have to revitalize, revision downtown here today. But what you need to do ideally is of these eight priorities that you have put in front of yourselves, because these are what you have told me are your priorities. Of these eight, I need you to hopefully get to four ideally that you say, okay, for the next fiscal year through the end of fiscal twenty-four, these are going to be our major priorities. And as you've heard this morning and into the afternoon, it doesn't mean that other things aren't happening that address a lot of issues. But what are your major areas of focus that you're telling the city manager that he and his staff, as they develop the budget and the work plan, need to be focused on? That's that's your challenge this afternoon. And if you you can't reach consensus on it, I think you can. Because I'm sort of trying to force you to reach consensus on what are your top four priorities. It doesn't mean that other things aren't important, but that's where you're trying to go. And so in talking about these items, it's not trying to figure out how to fix any one of these, try to avoid the temptation to solutions. But just why is that, why should that be a priority for next year? Why can't it wait maybe another year?
So would you like, are we trying to kind of sell it to each other, like lobby for certain things in this process? Or
You you don't have to, per se, you can jump to it. But I think the hope is to have some dialogue amongst the group about if if you feel strongly, let's say, you know, you felt strongly about the safe streets, you might articulate to your your other members of the council why you think that ought to be a top priority for next year.
I guess what my problem is, is that, from what my challenge is, is, no problems here, is we have eight priorities, they all look very important. Some of them seem very strongly intertwined. And so when I am deciding which of these four I'm going to put my sticker on, I don't know that, I mean, activating downtown is incredibly near and dear to my heart. But if we can't do it, thank you for bringing up zoning, yes. As part of the zoning converse, you know, they're all, how do we make this decision?
It's possible, right, it's possible some of them are a twofer. Let's say you like housing, housing is going to influence your zoning decisions, which may have an impact tangentially to addressing downtown. I mean, that's conceivable. These things are not all silent.
Yeah, I have a small process request for members of the public who are joining us in person and online. City Clerk, could we just toggle to the next page so everyone can understand that there is a second page beyond these four? Because I I actually was at first confused that there were eight when I first saw this. And so I want to make sure that people who are joining us also know that there are eight, it's not just these four. Thank you.
Right, there there are eight, and they were summarized on one of the prior slides, but I think it is helpful to jump over so everyone can see them all.
So just with the time left, we should probably only dedicate a couple of minutes to each of these. Is that, is that right?
If you want to end by two.
Okay, so if I can get, is the council interested in ending by two? And if yes, can we commit to being brief on our comments? Betsy, Councilmember Nash?
Oh, I was jumping to emergency preparedness.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Is it possible for us to vote to extend our time?
If everyone wants to, well, do you have a plane to catch?
I literally do, but I'm good for a while, I think I'd be good. So if we went to, I think we went to three, I would make it.
All right, should we target, let's target two thirty. Let's make a commitment to at least stay till the two thirty and try to wrap up by two thirty. Thank you all for that little thing. And but I think we do want to try to move quickly as possible through these items. Thank you.
To me, emergency preparedness is absolutely something that we have, that we must do, having just been through this. I wonder how much we can leverage the San Mateo County Office of Emergency Preparedness. It seems that many cities are dealing with this. And it's beneficial, first of all, if we get best practices, but also as we need to coordinate with others. So I don't know how to go about doing that. We definitely, to me, this is front and center. Electricity was hard, it'll be so much harder in the case of an earthquake, and we need to really figure this out.
So just commenting on emergency preparedness, just so I make you try to understand, like, I I know that this is part of the assistant city manager's portfolio, correct? And and that there is a a a position that we at least funded, if I I don't know where it's at, as far as the rec process. And so for from my perspective, going back to sort of the mayor's framing of where you know some things are, are, I I don't know that, like, this would get my 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 sticker based on what I know is already in the works there. And so, and so, but but in a general, obviously, it's 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 a priority. And I think the things that are in are in flight are 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 good for me for the moment.
I also feel like it's a fundamental duty of the city to protect and keep residents safe. And I know we've done that, we've actually made it through these storms and floods and outages. I think, I know a lot of people suffered a lot, but considering pretty well. That being said, I think topics like undergrounding utilities, again, that's kind of a a problem solving thing. But some of these specific item, working with community organizations. So again, it's kind of like how this is defined, I'd be curious about. But I think if you're looking at kind of like the front page headline to Steve's comment earlier about what we care about and what we're pursuing, I feel like this has to be, has to be on there.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson, for the emergency preparedness, this would definitely get my sticker. I I brought this up at a, I think it was at our emergency meeting a few weeks ago about including volunteer groups that already exist, we don't have to create much. There's a lot of information on there. Also, the Emergency Services Council is active and engaged and has a new ED, which is has slowed things down just a little bit at the county level, but definitely still a great resource. Just a a couple of things that I believe, the items that are on the second page, advancing equity, organizational effectiveness and community engagement. If it was the found, if it was all foundational and was actually a practice, a lot of these things we wouldn't be talking about. So I think they are definitely interconnected. So I don't believe I can separate advancing equity, community engagement and organizational effectiveness from disaster preparedness, because if we were already practicing that, we would actually have a plan in Menlo Park, which is why, to me, it, or at least a current plan in Menlo Park, which is why it's important to me. The other piece is, we don't really know the scale of impact of those two storms that provided outages. And I assume that we all have power now in Menlo Park, I don't know that to be true, but we do all have power. But we don't know the scale of impact, we don't know how many people actually got sick from those power outage. We just don't know, because no one has said, hey, I had to go to the hospital because my breathing machine didn't work. We we just don't know. So I think those are my only comments for right now about the emergency preparedness, it would definitely get a sticker for me.
Uh, thank you, I have to agree with Councilmember Combs that I'm not sure that this would receive my sticker, because a lot of the things that might fall under emergency preparedness, I see falling under climate preparedness and climate action of ensuring that, you know, we're ready for floods, we have a good response system to support community members as needed. And so, not that I wouldn't support emergency preparedness, because that is so essential for our community, but if we're putting it in buckets, I see this combined with an existing bucket that's already here on the on the slide. And I also want to note Vice Mayor Taylor's comment about the equity organizational effectiveness and community engagement. I completely agree that they should be elemental in everything else we're doing. And at the same time, I wonder if having a specific call out for one of these or several of these as priorities will help make sure that they are so front and center that, will that help them become deeply integrated into everything that we're doing? And so, because I know I'm one of the people that brought up some of these additional topics, thank you.
Well, now I'm wondering if we're trying to game the system a little bit, because I also was like, hmm, what if we stick all the emergency stuff under adaptation, which is under climate, and then foundational is equity, communication, organizational structure? And there we go, then I then I have enough stickers.
Yeah, I I'm gonna go out on a limb and say, uh, well, I'll bite my tongue. There is intersection amongst a lot of these. But again, if you were to focus, say, on emergency preparedness, it's probably going to look a little bit different than if if climate change was was there instead. There's synergies and there's relationships. But, you know, as I understand emergency preparedness, it's going to be much more on sort of practical response versus on the climate change, it's probably more policy, again, using electrification as an example. So it's probably going to look a little bit different, but there's interconnections with all of these. And certainly, because there's greater sensitivity to it, as you go forward in any of these areas, I would expect that a community such as Menlo Park would be more mindful about the equity issues than had been in people's minds in the past. So, no, you can't game it, you can't have a work plan and a priority list. You need to set as a body what your priorities are.
So I'm having trouble with these eight, because I can basically put it down to three.
Well, then you'll have a sticker to take home.
Right, but I don't want to, as you said before, I don't want to minimize any of the others. And so this is, I guess, some of them, to me, the three would be climate action, safe streets and housing. And then everything sort of falls under one of those buckets. Some of them, such as emergency preparedness, I think are front and center. As Mayor Wilson said, it is a fundamental responsibility of the city. But I also think it's something that we should be able to do if we focus on it in much less time than any of the other items. The other items are much more involved long term. Whereas we should be able to get emergency preparedness done right. And then obviously, we have to continue to review it, update it, things like that, but it's a different type of item. How do we deal with, and then I totally agree, that organizational effectiveness, advancing equity and community engagement is part of all of these. And I would also put activating downtown as part of the housing. I guess I'll just stop.
No, I I think you're on point in that some of these rocks may look bigger than others. And if emergency preparedness is not, you know, the big rock, in terms of that, that's something that you 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 expect that the staff would deal with in the matter, of course, anyway, that in terms of setting the council's higher priorities, you're going to focus on what you perceive to be the bigger, and in a lot of cases, the more policy involved issues.
However, emergency preparedness is something that we've been talking about as long as we've been on council, and we've never gotten it done.
Right, so nothing focuses the staff's mind more than the council adopting it as a priority. I mean, that's the rub in all this, there's only so much that can get done. When the council makes a statement as a body, this is our priority, that works wonders. You know, what gets measured gets done.
I would only add, just in looking at the framing of emergency preparedness, I don't want, w- w- we do have emergency plans in place and protocols in place. And and we have, we have a police department and and the fire district does not come under us, but for our area, there exists a a a fire district, and they all have very robust emergency preparedness plans or emergency response plans, and and again, I know that the city does. To the point of Councilmember Nash, I I think there is a lot we can do there to move that along. But I I want to be clear, this exists, I I feel that some of the dialogue made it seem as though there is nothing there. And and so, okay, and so I just wanted to make that point. And I I don't know if I'm kind of, so I I I, but I sort of gave my thoughts on emergency preparedness. Just to throw another one in there, like, for me, one of my stickers would go to to save streets. But you 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 know, back to the the pothole analogy, I would say, safe streets and street maintenance as as part of like looking at at that, especially because a a lot of sort of making streets safer involves public works projects. And and so, and and again, I I feel they're they're tight. But certainly, that would be, that would be, again, like I said, one of my priorities.
And just as an example, let's assume safe streets is a priority for the council. As the staff puts together the capital budget, because that's where most of that's going to go in, if you're talking about street maintenance, that sends a message to the manager and the public works director, okay, what sort of project should we prioritize in terms of street maintenance? So that's how all this comes together.
Although I guess I see street maintenance as something that is part of that, I don't remember what percentage, but that huge percentage that is something that the city already does and is not really a policy decision. And so when I think of the safe streets, I am thinking, in addition to what's here, just of the infrastructure itself, and what can we do better with how we look at safe streets and what we're doing, but not really the maintenance of it, piece, which I think is where I put the potholes. And so I also think, just sort of cutting to the chase, I think safe streets is also one of the my priorities. And I really like the idea of having development projects go to the Complete Streets Commission. I think that that would be a big advantage, as was mentioned in public comment. But obviously, there may be implications of that to timelines and all, which we need to consider.
I have actually a question for our city manager. Does the council need to make emergency or disaster preparedness a priority to make it happen?
So I I would say for good, good, good question for purposes, I'll say for the 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 public in in a way, because I I want to kind of reiterate the, what we're trying to accomplish today is it'd be very important for me, me personally, and then ultimately the entire team, to know what is most important to the city council. So there's going to be, with these eight items, and then even the longer items, there's still going to be work done. I'll say, if it's clear to me what's most important to the city council, that's extremely helpful. I can you point to the Menlo Park Community Campus Project, where the council made it abundantly clear that that was a very, very high priority. And that project has received quite a bit of staff time to move that along on on its timeline. So I I think there's, there still will be a number of, quite a bit of progress with the emergency preparedness disaster planning. But if it's, if it's the majority of the council's highest priority, I I'd like to hear that. Yes, there will be progress, no matter what, though, on on so many of these items, as it's relative terms when we, and there there'll be a slide later that kind of talks about when things come up. That's where some some of the work that we're identified here will not get done in the same timelines. But if resources are short, we'll know where to put our time.
Okay, I actually have a follow-up question, Councilmember Nash, if you don't mind. Okay, and and that is, just going back to, this is the hazard mitigation plan that was done, I think it's been two years now. And community engagement was a key requirement for it. So if 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 community engagement is required or advancing equity is required to receive a grant or to make something approvable, so do we have to make that a priority? If that's a part of the requirement for that grant or for that process?
Happy to have you chime in, and I can chime in if it's something specific to Menlo Park.
I just think it's a, that's a very good example, the the development of your local hazardous mitigation plan. So you're required to have one of those and updated every few years and able to get FEMA reimbursement in the wake of a disaster. And as part of that process, you engage in a certain number of community engagement, you need to hold a number of meetings, and you update the plan. The staff did that, and they would continue to do that every time it needs to be updated. I think what I hear the city manager saying that will continue to meet, the staff will continue to meet its obligations to do that, to remain in compliance. But if the city council says, hey, emergency preparedness is a top priority for us over the next fiscal year, then on top of that, which would already be done through the normal course, extra emphasis and resources and staff time will be put into looking at other aspects of your emergency response plan and making sure that it's as robust as the council would like.
Go ahead, Councilmember Nash.
Going back to emergency preparedness, I guess, I don't really unders, I I would like more clarification on what is the difference between making it a priority and not making it a priority? Essentially, if we have some event tonight, we need to be able to address it. I think staff did an amazing job with the storms. I think with more preparation, we could do better. So to me, I feel a need to prioritize emergency preparedness, but I also don't have a desire to go. What I'm trying to do is have us prepared. Thank you, Councilmember Combs. Yes, we do have plans, but be that much more prepared in the event of an earthquake. For example, being able to use the community volunteers or some, or if there's some other way to do that, great. But somehow be able to get into the community, be able to get to a more granular level than we generally are able to do. But I don't see a need to make it a huge project beyond that. Beyond some of the basic needs in an, you know, if we were to have an earthquake. I don't want to, so what are the, I guess, what I don't understand, and especially for emergency preparedness, is what does making it a priority do? What does and what happens otherwise? And what are the limitations? What are the, please?
Yeah, if I can just build off what Councilmember Nash was saying. I think the thing with with safe streets or seeing ordinances about climate action or housing plans, like we see it. We can see what's going on. I think one of the challenges with emergency preparedness is that the residents and the council, it's a little bit of a black box. And how that compares to maybe best practices or where standards should be. We get a lot of emails, Ms. Bramlett is fabulously knowledgeable on this topic. And I think a lot of the advocacy comes from just not knowing what's going on. Because I do think, like, we responded, you know, maybe we could have planned 24 hours before to have the library open, you know, two hours later or something. And that's like a learning that we, but I don't think that needs to make it a priority. Or maybe there's things we can do. So I don't know if it's just like a study session where we need to like see what's under the the curtain on this topic? Or if it's actually policy changes that need to be made? Is that what you're getting at, Councilmember?
Yes, and just, we don't need it till we need it. And then we, it must be there. So that's how I have trouble not making it a priority.
Yeah, I'll just sort of going back to the mayor saying on emergency preparedness, like best practices. And again, it just could be my own lack of knowledge or visibility. I really haven't seen where some city has done or responded to emergencies better than us substantively, like, right? And and I don't know how many cities up and down the peninsula even did the sort of the the hotel reimbursement. I I think in that way, the city was very much an outlier. I did not hear of a bunch of other cities where they even made their 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 community spaces available. So I think it's in, I hear what you're saying about having more visibility into it. But for me, it's also like, again, I haven't seen where, I know every once in a while, resident will say like, oh, you know, Palo Alto does this this better. And like I said, I've heard some Palo Alto residents say Menlo Park does stuff better. And so, and so I think it would be like, for me, looking at emergency preparedness, and I agree with you 100%. Councilmember Nash, there there is, there is stuff to be done there. But it would be really great if if like, it was like, oh, look, San Bruno just did this amazingly. And like, and Menlo Park didn't do a great job there. And then I could say, okay, our Berlin game did all of these things and Menlo Park didn't. But usually, and again, not, you know, referencing those those cities specifically, what people tell me is that like, oh, Menlo Park has done a bunch of things. And it's it's council members have been like way responsive, more responsive than what they've seen in 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 other places.
So listening to your comments, I'm just wondering, maybe communications is what we're really focused on.
Mayor, if I may, in the interest of time, I'm going to ask that we jump back about three slides to the slide that has all eight listed together. And maybe this is a better way to approach it. So you see all of the, all the priorities that were mentioned by the council members all in one spot. I think generally you've had a chance to to look at the slides and you have them before you in a printout that you can see what the subbullets were. But again, I think maybe taking a few more minutes for the council as a body to consider of the eight, which are all important. But if you had to narrow it down to four, which would be when the council tells the manager for the next fiscal year, these are our priorities as a body. Which are those four? And again, some of them may be handled in in due course anyway. So that's part of your your calculation. Organizational effectiveness, you know, that typically lends itself to the things under the manager's control. And so if he's a good manager, which he is, he's going to pursue a number of those items anyway. So that's not net, you wouldn't typically see that as a council priority because that's more of a staff level function, just as an example. So let me stop there and allow the dialogue to continue.
Sure, I suppose, coming back to one of these that I I just want to provide a little bit more context for my thinking of including it on my shortlist in conversation with Stephen, was advancing equity. And a specific case that in my my two months on this wonderful city council was we, as a city, pursued funding through the Urban Community Drought Relief Program, which was a program from the state. And when I looked at this program, it turns out that of the 200 or so million, 85 million was made available specifically to what the state considers are underrepresented communities and tribes. And they have a definition for what that means on their website. But I thought, you know, if we had this as a priority for our city, we would have tried to find those funds and get those funds to help resource drought relief, flooding relief in our communities that qualify as what the state calls an underrepresented community. And so I thought by having it as a goal, is that a way that we can specifically get resources and stuff that the the city isn't currently looking at to address opportunities across our city? And so that's my reasoning and thoughts behind why, yes, we need equity deeply embedded in everything we're doing. And I think there's also some above and beyond work that can be done on those topics that I'm excited to explore as well. So that's, that's one of the things that I'm thinking about on this list. Thank you.
Just a quick process question. At one point, we will be use the stickers, right? Or or no, or we won't?
Yeah, so ground rules on the stickers. They're mutually exclusive. You can't put all four stickers on one item. You get one sticker per item. And if you really feel the need to take a sticker home, I have more with me. So go ahead and use all your four stickers. We have the board here on the side with each of the eight items. And we would ask at the appropriate time, mayor and council, that you calmly make your way all to the board and and affix your item and stand over the shoulder of your colleague to see, well, where are they going? But that would be the process.
Sure, just out of curiosity, I wanted to pull up some other cities to see, you know, what are their goals? What are those priorities? And so I'm looking at San Diego and on their front page, it says, create homes for all of us, protect and enrich every community, advance mobility and infrastructure, champion sustainability, foster regional prosperity. And reading those things and the the kind of the verbs and everything around it. I wonder if some of these, if we've talked about this as a group already today, if some of these we want to combine in different ways. Like, for example, I mean, San Diego is combining mobility and and infrastructure together. Are there things that, as we go up and push these stickies, that we can also think about different ways to combine?
Councilmember, you make an excellent point. Ideally, at some point in the future, within less than a year, you actually go through a more robust strategic planning exercise. This is a priority setting. So this is, you're stepping into the water of strategic planning. A more robust strategic planning effort would be much more complex. But ultimately, you would end up with a document not dissimilar to what you see in San Diego or any number of cities. Our our company does a lot of these where you identify not only the big priorities, but you also often identify the objectives, the measurements, and you set up a structure to report back on them. And so you're you're making a big stride in that direction today, assuming you can get to a conclusion.
I'm interested in how, why we should put organizational effectiveness as a priority. To me, it's something that we need to be doing, but it's not necessarily a priority for the council. It should be a priority. It it just should be something that needs to happen underneath all of our priorities. And on, well, and also true for advancing equity, although I totally understand what you're interested in having the city do that. And then community engagement, jumping ahead. I think we have a more basic need for community engagement. I think we need to improve how we communicate with residents. I think we need to figure out what is the most relevant information, how to do it more timely, how to disseminate it to people better. Both as is outlined here with those who are not plugged in. And then also in an emergency, how do we do that without electricity, without internet, without cell service? We're relying on Zone Haven that only works, obviously, with internet service. And so I think that we really do need to look at communication. But to me, that's something that is absolutely necessary in each of our priorities. So I guess I would love to, if anyone has other comments about any of these priorities, talk about it. But then go ahead and do the putting our stickers up and then have a discussion as to where the stickers went after.
Thank you. This is a question probably for city management and for the facilitator. And now I'm blanking on what my question was. Oh, is another way to think about these trade offs and how to prioritize, thinking about agenda setting. So like, if we have a finite amount of hours that the council will be at the dais to discuss various agenda items and a finite amount of time that senior management can dedicate to staff reports and bringing things forward. That if we are looking between some of these priorities, knowing that all of these are priorities and they're all, they all need to advance. But if the city manager is struggling to decide whether to bring forward first a climate related agenda item or a downtown related agenda item, if there has to be a a decision making about which one's coming on a Tuesday night, that that will, the prioritization will help city management in directing those limited resources. And to Councilmember Taylor or Vice Mayor Taylor's point before, you know, we're, we get tired, there's only so much we can get to. So kind of like what we can get to in the year ahead of us. Is that another way to look at it to help us?
Yes, it's it's all about level of effort. And, you know, it takes a lot of work for that one agenda report to find its way on the council agenda to discuss a topic. Typically, a lot of work has already gone into that. So you have limited staff, you have limited resources. And again, there's only so many big rocks you can put in in your basket. And so this is what it's all about. It's all about priority setting. And what you do today, it's not fixed in concrete forever. Typically, it's for about a year, but we'll talk about when things can change. But what are you going to focus on first? If you were going to clean your house or paint your house, you'd say, well, what are, where am I going to start?
Yeah, I think, I know Vice Mayor Taylor wants to speak. I think the challenge for, let's face it, us politicians, is we don't want to say anything is not a priority. So it can be hard for us to pick because then it signals to a certain constituency, like, we don't care. And of course, we care. So that, I think, might be a challenge that's not facing. I I just think it's hard when we want to do so much.
Yeah, absolutely. Again, it's the nature of the people that would run for elective office and serve on a council, which lots of times is a thankless task. So you should be commended for that. And for the staff, the people that go into public service. But it is a matter of fact that you can't do everything. And if you do try to do everything at once, you are going to miss the big strategic issues that ultimately can position the city to achieve the vision that you want. You will burn out your staff, people will leave. It only works for so long as an organization to be dealing with, you know, a thousand things at one time. And on a normal given day, you're already dealing with 950 things. So it's a busy place and a lot is going on. But you're setting the tone as a body, what are some big rock issues that you want to deal with? And it's difficult because the inclination is to say, well, we're not going to limit ourselves, we're going to deal with them all. But in fact, you really can't do them all justice if you try it that way.
Thank you, Steve. And I I appreciate you for continuing to hammer on that point. Because it's helped me to actually get down to the fore and be confident about what I'm what I'm selecting. And then Councilmember Door, what you stated earlier, just about advancing equity. My big concern is, is that we do not know how, which is why it needs to be a priority. But going back to, and I'll just state this, and then I'll I'll be the first one to go put my stickers on. And that is, when I think about safe streets, I think about the infrastructure along with maintenance. But I look at policy that's already been up, that has already been passed by council, current and previous council, Vision Zero. And if I'm not mistaken, there is a lens of climate in there, if I'm not mistaken. But for me, the big piece around safe streets, if I selected it, we would need to update the transportation master plan. There are some intersections in Menlo Park that are unsafe for anybody to walk through, but they do every day. And then my last comment before my big sticker moment is that when it comes to emergency and disaster preparedness, I remember there was a grand jury report about how many folks in Menlo Park, or in actually in every city, were signed up for SMC alerts. The number is not high, it's very low. The other piece is that how effective is our emergency and disaster preparedness? And then also, how many disasters have we had? And now I will go stick my stickers.
No, you can go. I'll I'll just say that, like, from, and appreciate, obviously, I think residents know very much that the city can't do do everything. And and that's a recipe for disaster. I think, I I think the where there is, it's challenging is is that when people see their thing not being done and they don't exactly see why. So and I'll I'll make that very real. And like, when I joined council, there were lots of projects of which, four years, five years later, have still not really been acted on. But was what was definitely not a project was Quiet Zone. Quiet Zone was not a project when I joined the city council. So in the time that I have been on city council, it has not only become a project, but a highly prioritized project. And so, and so if I'm, again, like in, you know, one of the streets in my district, where they have been asking for for parking restrictions for like, I don't know, like, four or five years. And they see that that has not been acted on and was something that was identified a long time ago. But then Quiet Zone did not exist and has come and and become a priority. I think that's where that there is the problem, not the city council trying to do everything, which people know that the city doesn't and can't. It's that that the city very much prioritizes things in the moment and 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 doesn't provide and sometimes clear rationale for those things that that just went away.
Yes, and I think that's why we need something where people can have an expectation as to where they stand on the list. And so they know they're not being addressed right now, but this is when they will. And when something does jump like Quiet Zones, that it's, there's just transparency.
Yeah, and I do have to add, I supported Quiet Zones. I was one of those those votes. So it was not some secret SNAP agenda. It was, I I think, as Justin Shakes has said, I think it was unanimous when that was made a a priority or sort of made a project. But it did kind of come out of nowhere.
Mayor, I'm mindful of the the new 2:30 deadline. I don't want to give short shrift to the tail end.
Yeah, I would just ask, so it sounds like it's sticker time. Does anyone have any burning thing to say before we put our stickers on? Or want to, does anyone want to say where they're putting their stickers? Or will it be obvious who who's putting what stickers where? Does it important that we know who's doing what?
The council acts as a body.
Okay.
From my perspective, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be matter which council member put their sticker where. It's where they landed as a body.
I have a question, one last question, I hope. Activating downtown. That, as we discussed, I believe, really relies upon an economic development director or someone on staff who can really focus on that. Until we do, it's, I guess what I'm wondering is, I'm having trouble not making that a priority, but I'm having trouble figuring which are my four priorities. How does, um, once we have an economic, how does that work within it? Lack of a devil economic development director right now. And once we get someone, what difference does it make to have it a priority? And I guess realizing that there's all these other pieces that touch it, such as the housing element and safe streets and all.
I'm curious if you're going to create a new line that says economic development. Can we cut a sticker in half and share the other half with another council members to make a whole sticker?
No. But what you could do, you know, there was a lot of discussion, if you wanted to modify the activating downtown and make it activating downtown slash economic development, if there was a consensus to do that, that would be appropriate if there was consensus.
But what does it mean to make it a priority? Right now, I know that we've been trying to hire someone, have been not been able to find the right person. So does making it a priority just mean we have a, what does making it a priority mean?
It would mean that you're telling the manager that the city council is placing high emphasis on that. Obviously, one of the strategies to address that will be hiring an economic development manager. But there's probably a series of other strategies that would also come into play.
But if there's something that I know we could actually start on now, because we, versus something that I know. Anyway, I guess that's my.
But I think one of the things could be like, well, how much of the city manager's attention goes towards hiring an economic development director? And if you, if there's like four or five stickers on activating downtown, then maybe that's a signal to him that like, maybe a little bit more of his time should go to hiring that. I, 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 I think that's sort of one way you can see it.
Sticker time. I'm supportive of adding economic development to activating downtown.
So for those watching at home, the emergency preparedness received two votes. Climate action, three. Activating downtown slash economic development received four. Safe streets, three. Housing, three. Advancing equity, two. Organizational effectiveness, none. Community engagement, three. So of the groupings, the activating downtown slash economic development was identified as the highest priority. And then there are four more that come in with three votes in no particular order. Climate action, housing, safe streets, and community engagement. And if, if the council was so inclined and we tried to get you to four, I would turn to the manager, but I, I know that in some instances, five is not a bad number. I, I, the smart city manager is nodding yes, he could live with the five. And if that represents the, the consensus of the council, then those would represent your top five priorities for the next fiscal year. And so then we could talk a little bit about what does that mean? But does this?
I just want to make a note that we're short one council member for a second, so maybe just take a.
Let's take a quick bio break for, we'll come back at 2:05. This is a very short break.
Okay, having our city council returned, we will reconvene.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Mayor, council members, during the break, there was a reconsideration by one member of the council on their vote. And so now we have four top priorities. Again, in no particular order, activating downtown slash economic development and housing each received four votes. And then safe streets and climate action each received three. And so that would indicate that there was consensus amongst the council to make those the top four priorities for the next fiscal year. So let's take a few minutes and talk about what that, what that means. Because again, as there's been a lot of discussion today, just because something wasn't selected as a priority, doesn't mean that it's not being worked on. It doesn't mean that it's not important. And it doesn't mean that the staff is not moving matters forward related to that. But what it does mean of the four items that were picked by the council is that as a city manager works with his team to develop departmental work plans, to prepare the recommended operating budget, they will be more mindful of these particular areas and identify objectives and strategies that will help meet these priorities and move them further as the council deliberates the budget. You would expect that when the city manager does his transmittal letter, he will make reference to these and how the proposed budget forwards the objectives cited by the council. Mayor, it appears that there's a recount going on. And it would appear that we're back to five. Previously, the city manager had indicated that he was comfortable having five priorities. I think he's probably still comfortable with that. And I think this is probably a reasonable landing, landing place for the council. It's important that to stay on track in addition to the departmental work plans and the budget, that regular reporting occur as to how staff is proceeding on these various priorities. And I would look to the city manager to work with the council on what the appropriate frequency should be. Also, you should consider making use of your commissions. Part of my discussion with members of the council is, is how to have more value add with the commissioners. Those are people who volunteer their time in service of the city. To the extent that there are issues under any of these priority areas that can be referred to commissions for a further vetting and discussion, I would urge you to do that. And then if we could jump to the, well, next slide and then the one after that. So again, regular progress reporting, it's important for the council, if you can, to hold off on new big initiatives until the next time that you go through a priority setting exercise. But next slide, please. Things are always going to happen. That's the nature of the world that we live in. So here are some best practices criteria for adding initiatives and projects mid-cycle. There was an emergency, which obviously draws city resources that you have to respond to. There's a funding opportunity. We heard a discussion of a grant opportunity that the city apparently wasn't well positioned to pursue. But maybe there'll be other opportunities that you want to go after. And you want to shift your priorities to make sure you get that. Nothing is, uh, nothing focuses like money. If there is a multi-agency opportunity where some of your neighboring cities are pursuing, it can't be delayed, you want to be part of it, that's a great criteria. And of course, any sort of a safety issue or changes in law. There's been a lot of regulation in the area, state law regarding housing. And that has forced a lot of cities to either figure out how they're going to comply with it or fight with it. We've seen a lot of that this past year, particularly over SB nine. So these are best practices. And when considering what to put on the plate, you should also consider what comes off the plate. If there is a new big initiative that's going to take a lot of staff time, you should think about putting some other things aside for a little while and, until there'll be time to work with those. And of course, they're all not the same. Some issues come in small packages and some are big. A lot of the small items can be handled in due course. I would encourage you, hopefully you, you all have one-on-one meetings with the city manager. That's really the best time to talk to the manager and say, well, I'm hearing from my constituents about this issue or that issue. And allow him, use that word triage to triage it when he meets with you, rather than springing it on him in a council meeting. One of the earlier norms was no surprises. When, when things pop out at a council meeting, well, what are we going to do about the ducks in the pond? Then it begs a response immediately. It's better if you can work with your manager, he's professional, he's here every day with the staff to talk about it. Can we do something with this? Should we do something with it? That's a better forum for those conversations about resource allocation and working through issues. And I've encouraged you to do that. So with that, next slide, please. Some of the next steps after eating my sandwich, thank you, is I'll begin to work on a, on a report that summarizes what went on here today and highlights where you reach consensus. And I'll supply that to the city manager. And I would turn to the city manager because he's been listening attentively all day. And I know he's got, he understands his marching orders, but I think it's best to turn to him for him to talk about what his next steps will be.
Great, thank, thank you. Thank you to the council. I frankly kind of enjoyed the, the exercise with the dots and how, how things evolved a little bit. So I'm, I'm glad you got a chance to kind of take a step back and, and look at that. I can say that we are committed to trying to move everything on there forward. But you, you going through this exercise to actually prioritize makes a, a, a big difference for us. So we are, it will be a multi-step process. And so as Mr. Mermel just said, he's going to be producing a report. I think we may also look to even just provide a, a simple info updated upcoming council member, just to kind of reflect, uh, to acknowledge today's meeting. But I think we want to wait for the report to really be able to report back to the community on that. So hopefully in one of the next two upcoming meetings, we can just do a very simple acknowledgement of today's meeting. And the more extensive report would be the end of April on some of the, and so that will work out well in terms of budget preparation for this year. We will be committed to quarterly reports, report outs as we have in, in the past. We'll, we'll continue that commitment and then we'll look for ways to kind of, as I, we said previously, reflect all the various input that we've received into development of work plans. And we'll try to be clear about if, if there may be some things in there that will not be advanced. And so trying to be clear about, about that expectation as well. We'll see what, how we can kind of frame that for the council. So a lot of great input, a lot of good spirit today. So I appreciate everybody's time and commitment.
If we could jump to the next slide, please. Mayor, I learned a long time ago to let the elected officials have the last word. So I would turn to you and, and members of the council if they want to share any closing comments.
I'd like to turn it over to my colleagues. Would anyone like to share any thoughts from today's exercise?
Yes, I'd love to share a few. I just want to thank everyone for being here on a Saturday in person and on Zoom. This has been such a generative time and I'm so impressed and grateful for all the public engagement in this process. It's been really helpful and enlightening to me to see different priorities. And even though we have come to the shortlist here, I, I know myself, as well as every other council member here is excited to continue conversations with the public and see where and how there are other ways to get these actions and specific things that, that came up. Move forward in different ways as we can, knowing that these are the, the highest level priorities. And thank you so much.
Anyone else have any thoughts to share?
Councilmember Nash. Thank you. I just want to thank staff for putting this on to Mr. Mermel or Steve for facilitating all of this. It's, I think it's been a very helpful. I was debating whether to compare it to past ones, but I don't know that that's useful. But I think this is incredibly helpful. And it's been wonderful to actually have all our council members here and our new newest council member, who seems like you've been here for a long time now. And new staff members and just all to be here in person, finally. It's been very, very nice and I think incredibly helpful to hear other people's opinions. And I think there's been tremendous agreement, which has been pleasant, satisfying. Thank you.
First, I want to thank the city manager for putting this together. I know it was originally planned for February. And I'm, I'm hoping that the, the one month was helpful, considering the amount of things that happened in that time period. I want to thank the public for participating. I had the CCIN comments printed since they were not in the city council's packet with the nearly 400 submissions. But just know that your, your thoughts, your ideas are definitely being read by council and are definitely important. Even if you did not hear them this evening, I'm already thinking about 2024 priorities. Even though I am one of the council members that asked for a two-year work plan, I do. I do see that there are a lot of challenges that we have. However, I appreciate all the progress that we've made together. I also really appreciate being able to talk to everyone in public on council together and then also listen to your thoughts, um, even here where we do not agree. Because without this opportunity, we wouldn't know. So I do appreciate that. And I want to thank all the work that staff did to put together, um, the time that we had today. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just add, um, really great to be here and you, you know, all of these sort of indicators of, of return to some normalcy are always great and very satisfying. And so it's great to be, um, back in, in council chambers for, for one of these sessions. And, and I'll just add, so it's, it's very interesting as I was looking, looking at where we landed. All, all of those things are things of which there have been substantive, like sort of progress made. And there's a substantive foundation. And so I think it's, it's, um, again, I just, just want to call, call, call that out that like, um, that, um, for all of those things there, I can sort of like list off a few things of which have already been done. That does not mean, of course, that there is still more work to be done. But, um, but I, I think just an indication that, um, that, that we, we have been doing work in this area and the staff specifically, um, deserves a lot, a lot of the credit there. Thanks.
Thank you, everyone. I don't need to repeat what my colleague said. Thanks to everybody. Um, and I just want to remind everybody that today is tremendous and it felt monumental to me, um, that it was, it was just a moment in time. It's not the be all and all. And these conversations will continue. Uh, we'll have to continue to iterate and pivot and revisit. And there's a lot of next steps. So, um, stay tuned, stay engaged, and we appreciate all of you for being here. And I believe then at 2:19, I'm going to be adjourning this meeting. Thank you, everyone.